Good evening and welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting of January 14th, 2020. Can we have the roll call, please?
All council members are present.
Can you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to invite Chief Cammeyer up to the podium. Well, we have been very fortunate to have been served by Chief Cammeyer for the last several years here in Millbrae. And while we are sad that he is retiring, we wish him all the best in his retirement, and we have a little commendation here for him. Okay, whereas Chief John Cammeyer retired from the Central County Fire Department on December 18th, 2019, after 16 years of service. Whereas Chief Cammeyer started his fire career in 1990 and advocated for having paramedics on fire engines, he initiated community outreach for CPR training, and he promoted firefight fitness programs. Whereas Chief Cammeyer has served Central County Fire Department since its formation in 2004, serving the cities of Burlingame, Hillsborough, and Millbrae. Whereas Chief Cammeyer has gone up through the ranks of Central County Fire Department in various roles throughout the years as EMS Division Chief in 2007, Deputy Fire Chief in 2014, and Fire Chief in 2015. Whereas Chief Cammeyer developed and implemented numerous programs that improved fire and emergency service throughout Millbrae and the district, such as a public-private partnership for tactical response to high-risk events and coordinating multi-agency training drills. Whereas Chief Cammeyer's achievements are numerous and effective in promoting public safety of the communities, he served through education, prevention, and emergency response. Whereas Chief Cammeyer provided exceptional leadership and outstanding service to the city of Millbrae. And therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby honor and commend Fire Chief John Cammeyer for 30 years of dedicated fire service and extend our best wishes to John as he embarks on his new jersey journey. And I would just say, you know, it hasn't been the easiest time here in Millbrae. We had our recreation fire, center fire during John's time as Fire Chief, but had, you know, immediate response, excellent response to that tragedy here in Millbrae. We also have had a number of, as you know, wildfires throughout the state and throughout the world, frankly, and, you know, we've stepped up and provided emergency support to all of those disasters. And, you know, it does strain a small, you know, fairly small department to have, you know, having to deploy, you know, firefighters to different parts of the country, but we've pulled through it very well, and I think we have been a very safe community and we've been in very good hands. So, I'd like to thank John. And I know also Dino Derenieri from CERT would like to say a few words as well.
Chief Cammeyer, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your strong support of the Millbrae Emergency Preparedness Volunteer Programs that we have here in Millbrae. The Community Emergency Response Team, the known as CERT, the Lend Radio, which is a community radio setup that we have over 100 people with radios in the city of Millbrae, and also the Millbrae Amateur Radio Club, known as MARK. Your help has made our Millbrae programs actually a shining star throughout the county. At this time, I would like to present to you an honorary CERT vest, and which entitles you to become, no, yeah, to become a volunteer trainer at our training programs. So, you may hear from us. Also, we have from our membership a retirement card from all our volunteers who wish you, we all wish you, a wonderful retirement. But remember that there's a place for you with CERT. We have also some flowers for your wife Jennifer, and you can bring those home, because as they say...
She's a quarter right now.
Oh, she's...
Sorry.
Yeah, you know, behind every man, there's a great woman. Old saying, you know, but I've got to say it. And in closing, really, all roads lead back to Millbrae, and it will always be nice to see you again anytime, anywhere. Very good. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Dino, and CERT team, thank you. As I was driving, driving here tonight, it was kind of just going through the memories of the last five years, and as a council member leaving, I were just talking, it's been, it's been really interesting, because we were here kind of when this all started five years ago, under some challenging circumstances, but, and of course, the tragic, you know, rec center fire that we've gone through, but we've really built some great relationships in this community, and it really goes down to one thing, and that's the members of CCFD, the members, the men and women of the Fire Department. It's been my complete privilege and honor to work with them and to guide them and to serve this community. It's, I was thinking about Dino on the way here too, and just the relationships you build with people, and in five years, I hope we've kind of served you well, because I think our job is to make sure that organizations like the CERT team have the support, they need to do their job, it's a vital role. And I, when I, when I had my badge first pinned on me 30 years ago, I had already achieved everything that I ever wanted to in my life, and that was to be a firefighter. And to be here 30 years later is a little surreal, but I can look back and be proud of what kind of our department has accomplished here in Millbrae. And I would like to recognize also our, my peer department head members that, besides the CERT teams and the community groups, it's the department heads that really make the city work as well as it does, and it's been great building relationships and working with them, and they've been great to me, and certainly working with Tom, the city manager. It's been refreshing the last two years, working, at least two years, I was trying to remember how long it's been, but it's been, been refreshing in working with Tom and the department heads who are really committed to this community, and you should be proud of them, as I know you are. But for me, I'm excited for what the next chapter holds for me, and I'm doing some fun stuff right now, and retiring is, I don't really know what that means exactly, but I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing and serving in whatever capacity I can. So, I would just like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this honor. Thank you to the council for your relationships and your friendships, because that's really what has gotten me through these last five years, and to all the members of CCFD who have, are today and will ongoing serve this community very well at the highest level possible. So, thank you very much. Would you like to do a photo? Mr. Cummins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair. Chief, I just can't emphasize enough the shoes that you created, a big footprint, and not to say that your predecessor won't be able to fill it or do just as well, but you came in at a very difficult time, you did say, but you were thrown into, Jean Chief, unexpectedly, at a time when we were transitioning our whole department into the central fire. And, and you can just imagine just the chaos and all the, and all the, you know, just unknown factors that goes in trying to meld three cities together. So, I just can't emphasize enough how much we appreciate your steady hand and how you managed your staff and also fulfill all your missions and goals. So, thank you again, Chief.
So, just to coatail a little bit what you had to say, yes, there was a lot of chaos and uncertainty that everybody was experiencing, but your leadership was superior, and I thank you very much. You were a huge role model for me. Thank you.
Ditto to that, I will also say thank you for the Pink Fire Engine, for being such a great partner with the CERT program. I mean, we are fortunate to have the Training Center at Station 37, and as a CERT, three of us are CERT members, how much fun it was to put out fires at the fire station, and also your support for all of the public events that I have dragged you into. So, I am very thankful for that, and for the firefighters who've come to my door, I have two, had two, now one elderly people, so you have been there when my dad fell and broke his hip, all and all and on, and I'm very grateful for that.
Short and sweet. You have meant a great deal to our community, as you're, all the firefighters have, so we thank you so much, and it's been a difficult road. You're representing three different cities here, and we've had to do the fire assessments, so all the help with those efforts to make this work wild and improve public safety is so important to us, and thank you so much for all your years of service, greatly appreciated.
Could you do a quick photo with the council and maybe the CERT?
Mayor, if I may, real quick.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, Chief, you'll never be John and me, you will always be Chief, and I say that with the utmost of respect. You're an inspiration in your leadership and management abilities, not just to the fire service, but across the board to all of us in the municipal business. So, it's been a pleasure. I hope to continue a great relationship with you, and thank you for everything you've done, and I'm going to miss you, and it's been a great pleasure, so thank you.
Do the firefighters join us as well? CCFD?
If council needed to redesign...
Joe, get out here.
Get in the picture.
You should get in the picture. You were part of the history.
Oh, yeah, John and I go way back.
Plenty of room over here, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Tom, why don't you go in there?
I want to take a picture before I got in there and he broke a kid.
Do you want to open the commendation?
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll make it work.
One, two, three. Good.
Awesome.
Yeah, you got my start.
I do.
Mary Griffin with the Curbside Recycling.
Okay. City Manager Williams?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hollibur, members of the City Council, happy new year to all of you. After item number two, which is the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing, that includes a calendar of events, reports of bills and claims, we do have no report out of the city attorney, there was no reportable action on November 12th. We have the approval of the meeting minutes, item number three, and that's the regular meeting minutes of November 12th, 2019, and December 10th, 2019. There are no oral reports this evening for any committee, from any committee or commission chairs. Following that item, we have public communication, and that's available for any member of the public to speak on any item, not on the agenda, for a time limit of three minutes. We then move to the Consent Calendar. Item number five on the Consent Calendar is to consider a resolution accepting the 2019 pavement repair project as complete. Item number six is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a contract increase in the amount of $6,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year through June 30th for our Emergency Services Director Coordinator position. Item number seven on the Consent Calendar is to accept by motion the comprehensive annual financial report, known as the CAFA report, for fiscal year 2018-19. Item number eight is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit to the Department of Housing an SB2 planning grant in the amount of $160,000. Item number nine on the Consent Calendar is to consider the quarterly investment schedule for the first quarter of fiscal year 2019-20. Following item number nine, we move to public hearing. We have one item under public hearing, that's item number 10, and that is to consider adoption of the proposed updates to the city of Millbrae Schedule of Fees for Building, Planning, and the Finance Department. Item number 11, under Existing Business, is to receive the informational report on the draft final classification and compensation study. Under New Business, item number 12 is the Council Discussion and Appointments to Council Subcommittee for the Year 2020. That's an action item. Item number 13 is an informational report on the Broadway Tree Planting and Downtown Tree Planting Project. Item 14 is to consider a resolution from Seamless Bay Area Transportation. Item number 15 is to consider adoption of a resolution for the submittal of an application for the Recreation Trails Program Grant. And the last item on the calendar, item number 16, is to consider adoption of resolutions approving the submittal of an additional grant under the Land Water Conservation Fund Grant to support outdoor recreation projects. Following that, then we move into Council Comments, and that would conclude the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Moving on, we have a report out from the city attorney on the closed session of November 12th, 2019.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That takes us back to last year on November 12th, at the conclusion of the city council meeting. The council met in closed session to discuss labor negotiations, and as your city manager mentioned a minute ago, there was no action to report out from that session.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to the approval of minutes, we have the minutes from November 12th, 2019, and December 10th, 2019. We have a motion from Councilmember Pappan and a second from Councilmember Lee. Your votes, please.
The minutes passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have public communication. This is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda, and speakers have three minutes. The first speaker we have is Jeanne Perry.
Good evening. I wanted to briefly talk about the survey of adult and aging populations that is currently being conducted here in San Mateo County. This is, this survey will provide data for the strategic plan for the next three years, and it's, the most participation we can get, the better. I was in Fresno last week and saw a big billboard in Spanish that was referring to the census, but the message is exactly the same, "Take 10 minutes now and reap the rewards for the next 10 years," and that is so true of this. So, we were able to actually pass out 200 of these surveys at the Resource Fair on Saturday, and we're taking them to, in Chinese, to the self-help for the elderly luncheons and different methods of reaching people. The link for the survey in English is available online, and I believe Nextdoor actually posted it, but I can provide it too if you don't have it. So, even if you aren't over 55, if you play a role in supporting an individual who is over 55, or an adult with disabilities, you know, get your data in so that the planning can take place for what resources are going to be needed going forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, we'd be happy to work with the county to provide a link on our homepage as well, for easy access.
Okay. See any other speaker slips? So, seeing none, public communication is closed.
I have one item, sorry.
For public communication?
Yeah, actually, I wanted to say this in lieu of my comments real quick, because I want to make sure this message gets out, it's just a very quick thing.
Is it from somebody else, or?
No, it's from me.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Want to go to the podium, though?
No, it's okay if I just sit here, it's really quick. So, I just wanted to thank, I forgot to thank my family for the help from last year, so I just want to put that out there, because, you know, we always take our family for granted. And also, I forgot to mention a very important organization, the Millbrae Community Foundation, and their work they did for us in the past few years and this year, so thank you for the time.
Thank you. All right, we're now moving on to the Consent Calendar, and we have, let's see, items five, six, seven, eight, and nine. We have a motion from Councilman Lee, and a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. Your votes, please.
Items number five, six, seven, eight, and nine on the Consent Calendar passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have item number 10, which is a public hearing on adoption of proposed updates to the Millbrae Service and Fee Schedule for Building, Planning, and Finance Department Fees. And do we have to open the public hearing, or is it already open, because it's continued from?
Open the hearing.
Okay.
This is a new hearing.
Oh, okay.
You're going to open it now?
Okay, yeah, do we have a motion?
Have the staff report.
Okay.
Part of it, thank you.
All right, your votes, please.
The motion to open the public hearing passed unanimously.
Okay, and we have our Finance Director Assistant, City Manager, Deanna Hellbrand, here.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is a continued initiative of business, but we did not continue this item. We separately noticed the community development-related fees, building and planning fees. On November 12th, you heard a presentation to update Public Works, Recreation, City Clerk and Finance Fees. We decided to take a bit more time on the building and planning fees, they had quite a few fees. As last time, I wanted to thank the departments for working so hard on this. You'll see, you've seen in your packet, there were a number of fees to work through. Like last time, I'll be bringing Courtney Ramos up from Matrix Consulting. We hired them in 2018 to work on this project, and this is the conclusion of the fee schedule part of the project. So, we did, the first step was a cost allocation plan, where we calculated administrative costs to spread across the various departments, including departments charging fees or enterprise funds like water and sewer, followed by this fee study update. And we are also working with them on a revenue enhancement study, looking at other revenue opportunities. So, again, we're looking tonight mostly at planning and building fees, and one finance fee that was inadvertent, it wasn't inadvertently left off, I'm sorry, we actually worked more with the county to confirm this fee. So, as those fees were finished, rather than include it in the study, we used the same type of calculation to validate this fee with the county and their rates. It's a service mostly provided by the county through our Sheriff's Office contract, and so that's the alarm monitoring fee, or monthly alarm monitoring, it's a little bit different than our alarm monitoring permit. So, with that, I'll bring up Courtney to discuss building and planning fees. We have staff here with any questions, and I'll come at the end to discuss the staff recommendation. One thing to clarify is, Matrix worked within legal parameters to identify, for example, the maximum fee we could charge. The staff is making recommendations, and those recommendations are based on council goal of fiscal sustainability, and as it relates to building and planning fees, we looked at 100% cost recovery and making our staff recommendations. So, with that, we'll bring up Courtney.
All right, thank you. Good evening, happy new year. I will, I will jump into this, as it'll be a little bit repetitive for some of you who have been through this presentation a couple of times now, but what I wanted to do is just give a brief introduction, talk a little bit about the scope of services, the study objectives, talk about the legal framework that surrounds setting user fees, give you an idea of the basic costing methodology, and then talk a summary of the finding and results, real high level, and then turn it back over to Deanna. So, as she says, staff can talk about what their recommendations are, because again, what we're doing with this study is really kind of showing what the ceiling is. What is the full cost to provide that service? And what staff are then here to do is to present their recommendations for what should be charged for that service, so difference between cost and fee, cost and price. So, a quick introduction, and I'll breeze through this, because like I said, I think most of you have seen me up here a couple of times already, but I am here representing Matrix Consulting Group. My name is Courtney Ramos. The Matrix Consulting Group, we're just down the road in San Mateo. We've been around for about 17 years, providing services to local government, including cost of service, process analyses, management and staffing audits, as well as public safety reviews. I was the project manager for this portion, for both the cost allocation plan and the user fee study, and I was supported internally from Matrix by Kushbu Hussain, as well as Jessica Mazenko, who worked on this, as well as countless members of city departments and staff, who were crucial parts to getting this study completed. So, what is a fee study, other than a giant, long report with a lot of numbers in it? It provides a tool for understanding the current services that you provide, the service levels associated with that, specific to planning and building, the number of plan reviews that are associated with a particular fee, the number of inspections that can be expected to be received for a fee that you are paying for that service. It can help you understand a little bit the demand for those services, and what fees can and should be charged. For the most part, like I said, we talk about what the ceiling is, what is the full cost of providing that service, but there are also certain fees that are set by the state, or that have, that have caps on them, so making sure that we're in compliance, not just with how we calculate the fees, but if there are any state or federal recommended fees, that we don't exceed those fees. The benefits and uses of a fee study, like I just mentioned, first and foremost, we want to make sure that we're in compliance, we're not charging more than we should be charging, either because it's already been limited or capped, but also in accordance with the way we're supposed to cost those things out. It helps you understand what is it costing to provide those services. This was not a, it wasn't a staffing study, it wasn't a process study, it looked at how services are being provided, and what's the cost associated with that. But it also takes a look at not just the direct cost, the staff who are providing that service, but also the indirect overhead associated with that service, so really giving you the full picture of what is the cost associated with that. We looked at streamlining the fee schedules, so to help really make sure that we have all the fees in there that we should have in there that were counting for all the services that we should have in there. And so, that includes new services, getting rid of old services, and making sure that ultimately what we have and what we're able to present to the public is something that's comprehensive and understandable. So, I talked a little bit about legal framework. There are several rules and regulations in California, because we like to make rules and regulations here, that talk about what you can and cannot charge for, for fees for service. There's Prop 134, 21826, there's government codes, there's not only the state attorney general's opinion, various city attorneys within the state have come out with their own opinions, but ultimately, they all kind of say the same thing, which is that a user fee can, it has to be, there has to be a nexus between the service that's being provided and the fee that's being paid. You cannot charge more for a service than it's costing you to provide that service. If you do, it's considered a tax, and therefore, it must be voted on by the public in order to approve. So, what we wanted to do, like I said, first... So what we wanted to do, like I said, first and foremost, was make sure that we are complying with these rules and these regulations and these guidelines. So the approach that we took in order to cost services out is called, is what's called a bottom-up approach, where what we do is, we look at what is the fully burdened rate associated with various staff in each different department, look at the average amount of time that it takes for them to provide that service, and rate times time equals cost. This is opposed to what would be considered a top-down approach, where you would take the total cost of a department, let's say, and spread that over all of the fees for service. Because what we want to do is, we want to make sure that as an applicant, as a user of that service, that you're only paying for that cost associated with that service, not for a portion, a greater portion of the department or overhead costs associated with that. So we want to be really specific about that. The bottom-up approach is the most widely accepted and the most defensible approach for defending fees for service. As I said, we also looked at updating the fee structure, getting rid of outdated things, adding in new things. We looked at determining fully burdened hourly rates, so not just looking at salary and benefits, but looking at any departmental overhead associated with that, if there are support staff, such as permit techs or admin assistants, making sure that we factor that in there, as well as services and supplies, the building, the lights, all that kind of stuff. We looked at volume statistics, so kind of how much of these do you do? How does that impact things? We looked at the gaps between cost and revenue. So what are we generating versus what is it costing us? And that's kind of a big impact, because you can have something that might have a really big impact, or a big difference between what you're charging now and what it's costing you. But if you don't do it, it's not that big of an impact. Versus something much smaller, on a smaller scale, you could have a minimal discrepancy in what you're charging and what it's costing you, but because you do so many of them, it can have a large impact. So kind of taking a look at that. So when we updated the fee schedule, we talked with staff to determine what are the services that are being provided, to make sure, not just do we have the right fees on there, but does it make sense how we've termed them, what they're called? So some, some things were kind of minor tweaks to the language, to make it easier to understand if you're somebody at the permit counter who has to administer those fees, or if you're somebody who's coming in and trying to figure out what it's going to cost you to, you know, remodel your bathroom, or something like that. What we wanted to do was make it more user-friendly. We expanded some of the categories, some of them were a little too narrow. And by expanding them, what we did is, we provided greater parity then in what we're showing for the cost of service, and ultimately then what you will be able to charge for those fees. Some things we were able to condense and take from, you know, four or five categories down to one, because ultimately now, the process is such that you don't need all those different designations. So again, streamlining the fee schedule. When we looked at gathering time estimates, we talked about breaking the process down. You know, it's planners and building inspectors, they're not attorneys and they're not consultants, so they're not used to necessarily logging their time on certain things. So in order for us to get good time estimates, what we wanted to do was break the process down, especially when you're talking about a project that you aren't actively working on for three months, six months, or a year, but that you are, but that you're touching at some point through the process. So really to kind of break it down for the intake and processing, if you have to route it, the review process, how many reviews, how many departments are involved with those reviews, and then ultimately into issuing a permit. So we took time estimates by position. We also wanted to make sure that we took into account desired service levels. And when we took those time estimates, we also didn't want to take the simplest project, we also didn't want to take the most complex project. What we wanted to do was take what is an average estimate of the types of projects that we see for that particular service that we were trying to cost out. As I said, this was not a process study, wasn't a staffing study. But we were able to go back and forth and question time estimates, and make sure that those time estimates seem real. We didn't just, you know, you said it takes you four hours, so we're going to assume it takes you four hours. But to judge the reasonableness of those estimates against other time estimates that we've seen in other jurisdictions, and if there wasn't, to kind of push back and ask why. So, you know, in some instances, it might be that you have a stricter code, or a more lenient code, in the way that you enforce certain things. So just to make sure that we've pushed back and we've asked those questions, vetted it, if you will, to make sure that they are as accurate as they can be. When we talk about the full cost of providing the service, like I said, we start with the direct, the salaries and the benefits of the staff who are providing that service. We factor in departmental overhead, including the department admins, services, supplies, lights, things like that, and then as well as citywide overhead, so finance, HR, city clerk, and all of that support that goes into those other departments, which then gets you to the full cost, which again, is the ceiling. That's all we're here to do, is to tell you what is the ceiling? What is the full cost of providing that service? And in a couple of slides, I'll hand it over to Deanna, and she can talk about what the recommendation is for those fees. So, big picture overview, when we look at fiscal year 20 fee-related costs, and we compare that with the projected fee-related revenue, the city is under-recovering its costs by about $850,000 annually. Again, this is kind of snapshot in time, right? So we're looking at budgeted expenditures, we're looking at the last year's revenue. You know, obviously, we're not going to have the same number of projects in the same service categories as we did previously, but if we just do that comparison, that's what the difference was. Building is at about 48% cost recovery, with planning at about 15% cost recovery. Typical cost recovery for building is usually generally between 80 and 100%, with planning somewhere between 50 and 70%. And if there aren't any questions about methodology, I will turn it back over to Deanna.
Hey. So with that, we've, exhibit A to your staff report was the staff recommended fees. We compared current fees, the total cost, and the recommendation. I don't know if you wanted to walk through these page by page, or just take questions?
Question, when you said attachment A, did you mean attachment one?
I'm sorry, attachment one, my, actually, attachment two to the staff report. Is the, attachment two to the staff report is the current, it's a comparison of the current fee, the cost of services calculated, the recommended fee, and any notes. In general, these were, if they were different from the calculated fee, it was related to a state law type of thing.
Yes, Councilman Lee?
I prefer we go page by page, or item by item.
Okay. So beginning with the first page, these are...
Sorry, Ms. Hellbrandt, is it possible to make it a larger screen, or a full screen? Maybe like pull up the PDF instead of the Excel?
The PDF file might be easier to read. It's got, it's got, it's got the watermark, and all that other stuff.
Tabs on the top?
So do control and zoom up to large. Once you do this as full screen, and then zoom up, and you can move, and you can move this however you want, okay?
Okay. Okay, starting on page one of the exhibit, we, these are single-family, one or two-family dwellings, ADUs and accessory buildings, so typically residential properties. A primary recommendation was to move from a valuation base in a couple of kind of standard projects, for example, kitchen remodel, bathroom remodels, re-roof, swimming pools, spa, hot tub, sauna, to a fixed rate. For larger projects, new addition or alterations, we are still retaining a valuation-based table. And if it's okay with, is okay with the council, we'll review that table separately. Also, for electrical, plumbing, and mechanical, we went from a per-device, which required a technician to count each outlet, we've used a, moved to a square foot model, again, at the recommendation of staff.
Yes, Ms. Peppin?
Great presentation, by the way, and the summary of everything. Thank you very, very much. With the new ADUs, which is alternative dwelling unit laws, are we, is that included in this? Are we going to run into issues as we move forward? Do we know? We may not know, because the laws are constantly changing.
From the most recent information I've received, more of the ADU law is reflective on development impact fees, but I don't know, Joan, do you have a different?
Well, if I may, we're also bringing in ordinance, it's been reviewed by the Planning Commission, will be forthcoming to the city council, to adopt actually a local ADU ordinance here, Brad, in the next month. So that will be forthcoming.
Okay, yeah, I just...
We want to make sure that's addressed.
Yeah, we want to make sure that's addressed, so that we're not implementing something that will be...
It's illegal.
...useless. And so one of my questions as we move forward here, as to the flexibility of these fees, if you could address that as we approach them, because certain laws change all the time. So thank you very much.
And another thing that we'll be doing, and with great advice from the city attorney assigned, which was Jarrett Yan, who was a great help, we'll be on the fee schedule that gets posted, we'll be posting the resolution attached to any fee. So for example, if we bring something forward and it just has a single fee, we'll note that on kind of a master fee schedule, so we won't be losing fees, or where they came from, or how did we do this. So we'll keep a better master document, and I really appreciated his work and his feedback. That was only one of the many good suggestions.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Just curious, if we're going, looking at single-family dwellings, looking at bathrooms, and we're going from valuation to a standard price, does that mean a huge bathroom remodel is paying the same fee as a half-bath?
Yeah.
So, the short answer to that is yes.
You need the microphone.
The short answer to that is yes. A bathroom, regardless of size, still takes the same number of inspections. It's a set number of inspections.
Well, no, if you're putting in a shower stall, you've got to come back for the before and the after-water test, but if you're doing a half-bathroom with no shower or bathtub, you're not doing that.
You're correct in that case, yes.
So I don't see how we could be charging a small remodel the same price as a large remodel.
Point taken.
Okay, Councilman Lee?
So I just want to make it clear that if you're doing like electrical, in case we're supposed to stay with the bathroom, you're not being charged twice, right? You're only charged for that one flat fee, and you're not going to be charged for the square footage calculation, right? Of course, that addition to...
So for those flat fees, I believe in the notes...
Seems like, the way I read it, it's all included, but I just wanted, I want to hear...
Just, I think on the resolution notes, it reads, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing are included in the kitchen remodel, bathroom remodel. Maybe it's on the resolution attachment. What's that? Yeah, so it is included, and if it's not, it's not, we'll get that, and open the, and the phone up in the...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that there is something, there is something that is clear, that's very clear, not, you know, one way or the other, you know, one way. I am not in favor, I am not in favor, either have flat fee, or some square footage, square...
It is included, I'm sorry, the title summary says, kitchen remodel includes plan review and MEP, and MEP is mechanical, electrical, you won't pay your kitchen remodel fee plus an electrical-based cost per month.
And I agree with Councilwoman Schneider, it should be a tier system, depending on how big the project is and how many inspections. I mean, we're talking about cost recovery, right? And I understand that we're not going to get 100%, and I don't think we can do 100%. I want to make sure that we'll be able to remodel without disincentivizing people to remodel or update their homes. So let me also ask you, if, so on the square footage, is that only the parts that's being remodeled? Or is that the, so if you're doing a remodel of like your bathroom, you're not going to be charged for your whole house, right?
Correct, just the square footage that's, that's being remodeled, or permitted.
Okay. So if you're doing the whole house, that's why I'm kind of thinking we need to do a tier system here, because if you're doing a whole new house, like you're remodeling a whole house, you can, if you add all these percentage together, you're talking about 48% of your, you know, it's 48 cents per square foot. That's quite a bit. So if you're doing 1,000 square feet...
No, because it could get included.
So it's...
No, 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 I'm saying if you're doing a whole house.
Yeah, the way it breaks down is, if you're doing a remodel of your house, you're going to pay based on the valuation of the work occurring. Then on top, that, yes, we are incurring costs for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, based on per-square-foot cost. And that number, when we looked at this, I found it to be somewhat low, considering the county was probably three times higher than that, for their electrical, plumbing, and mechanical. But they also have a lot higher cost for the services, so...
Okay, I realize that, you know, it's, you say 100% recovery, based on 100% recovery? Okay. I think we need to just talk about that a little bit more.
Just in general, or...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if this is for a small project, it's not a big deal, like you're talking 10 square feet, or typical bathroom, or whatever, I mean, no, I mean, living room, or whatever. But when you're talking about the whole house, you're talking, you're talking about 3,000 square feet, and you're talking 48%.
Well, that's probably, you know, a six-figure construction, you know, project that you're talking about, if you're talking about remodeling a whole house, so, you know, a couple thousand, even $1,000 for a permit isn't that much, if you're doing, you know, $200,000.
Yeah, but if you're doing, I mean, I've gone through remodels, it's not just that. You also have to pay the fees to the schools, high school, elementary district, and you don't want to dissuade people from, and the only people who can afford to do that are the ultra-rich people who have a lot of money to do that. So if you, if you just have a modest home and modest income, and you want to remodel your house, you can't.
I would think the fees are a very small cost compared to, you know, the type of remodeling that you have in mind. You know, I think this fee schedule is a little bit different than the recreation fees, for example, because that's more of, you know, kind of a community-type of, you know, service that's being provided, whereas this is really more of a private benefit to, you know, a property owner. And I think, you know, our city should not be subsidizing that, you know, very much.
I understand that we want, we don't want to subsidize, which we have been, but also I don't want to dissuade people from remodeling their house.
And I think, Ms. Brandt, if I may, and Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, I think to respond to the council member's question about school impact fee, that's for new development. This is for fees for service, so a remodel, for example, or any fee under this schedule does not invoke...
They charge you if you're a model.
No.
It's not just new.
It's new.
They charge you for remodel. I got charged for remodeling. I have to pay a fee to this high school district, and I have to pay a fee to the school district. And it's, when I was remodeling, I had to pay both fees.
An impact fee?
Maybe a property tax?
No, remodeling, whatever, they charge you per square foot, so whatever you're doing remodeling, you have to pay that square foot.
Under state law, I'm sorry.
Increase in footage.
Under state law, the school districts can collect fees for any addition greater than 500 square feet that's made to a house or new structures. So an interior remodel would not be impacted by school district fees under current regulations of the state.
Vice Mayor Schneider, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to, I'm going to chime a little bit of what Councilman Lee says, in terms of 100% cost recovery. We don't yet have our approved climate action plan, but a number of these fees touch on things that we're going to want both businesses and residents to do, to make us more resilient, to make us more fire-safe, or more water-controlling. So the fees that I had a concern about being 100% are any of the solar fees. I understand when I read this, that it says it's dictated by the state, so, but when we get to solar fees, I'll come back. But it was the gray water, the stormwater, the, believe it or not, water heaters. So if we're trying to electrify buildings, and we're charging to go away from gas-powered water heaters, or gas-powered furnaces, to electric, and we're charging that fee on top of what's already $5,000, $6,000, or $7,000, it does mean only the wealthy can afford to make those changes, but we're going to need everybody to be making those changes in a climate change world.
That's, that's under plumbing?
Well, they're scattered kind of throughout the list of those. And I think the problem is, we don't have our climate action plan, which means we would look at these fees through the eyes of a climate changed world.
There's a fee for gray water system that I want to...
Yeah, there is, there is, it's $385, I think.
It's a good point you're bringing out, so I would recommend we kind of just go of just go through the list, and then you can add your point there.
Well, my only other one is HVAC. As we get warmer, we don't air-condition, but we've got seniors and people with children, and during that Labor Day weekend two years ago, it was brutal in those homes. And I'm not a fan of air conditioning, but.
Can we, Mr. Mayor, please?
Yes.
Through the chair. I'd like to point out, too, that the state offers certain rebates to encourage people, so there are benefits to many programs out there, which I would hope that we include when we post these, different fees and such, because we do want to help people become more efficient in their homeownership. So, I'm sure we'll be on top of that, but it is encouraged at all levels, the county gives rebates, and the state. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Lee.
Okay, so the other question, so if I want to put air conditioning on my system, I don't have to add, change my ventilation, much of my ventilation. What's the charge, what would the charge be for that? That's not a device anymore, not charging for a device? No, no, outdoor, a whole air conditioning unit, you just hook it up to your existing ventilation, you're not going to put in a new ventilation.
You're going to install it, sorry, you're going to install it into your existing system. However, there are provisions at the state, in the eyes of energy conservation, are going to require certain testing of that equipment, that's done by a third party, just to make sure that it is functioning properly and efficiently.
So, we're not going to be charged, so that'll be inspected by somebody else, and we don't, we won't be charging for that.
Right, but they do report to me on that. I get a report on whether the system passes or fails.
Okay.
Okay. So, are we still on the first page here?
I'm done.
Kind of going in different, different angles here, but are we ready to move on to page two?
Okay, page two is specific plumbing and electrical fees. So, I think you just talked about gray water systems, water heaters.
I'm actually want to encourage gray water systems, so I would say, I would be happy to subsidize that, to encourage people to use gray water and install gray water system.
Sorry, is this for, only for single-family residents, or is it for multifamily, or commercial? Okay, so I think that might be possibly a way to delineate. For example, you know, with the TOD1 and 2 projects, we have, you know, mandated a number of energy efficiency and water, you know, conservation measures, and in those cases, I don't know if, I don't think we should be, you know, subsidizing something that we've mandated. Whereas, I think it maybe could be different if it's, you know, a homeowner that wants to try to be more efficient and green their home. I think I would be open to having some type of, I don't want to say a subsidy, but a fee reduction in that case, but not for larger.
We have a tier system, we have a tier system.
Yes, Councilwoman Pappen.
At this point in time, I think that should be evaluated in the future as to how many of these systems are being sought after. I am not willing to make those kind of modifications at this point in time, since we've lost like $800,000. We're trying to implement cost recovery here, so sometime in the future, maybe, but again, I think there may be county programs and state programs which would benefit the consumer that we do not need to take up at this point.
Sure, Councilman Lee, you can respond, go ahead.
Let me just, I went to the Peninsula Clean Energy Retreat last Saturday, where there was a discussion, and it's, it's, on one side, they're still concentrating on giving rebates to people to buy an electric car, but there is $10 million set aside from Peninsula Clean Energy for resiliency actions, not defining the program yet, as I understand it. So, we really need to be very active with Peninsula Clean Energy in seeing, is it, is the money best spent to give a rebate for somebody who's already wealthy buying a Tesla, or is it better spent trying to electrify an apartment building so that you can keep the apartment building as affordable housing? I think there's a number of things that we could be looking at, but PCE has that $10 million, and then they may have other programs that could help us with the resiliency of existing properties, which could fund, as, as Councilwoman Pappen said, there could be some monies that could rebate for a, taking your water heater off of gas and putting it to electric. It's still, this is all still just happening right now, but I think we need to be very aggressive in keeping an eye on all of those funds, potential funds.
And there's the other question of ADUs. I mean, we're all in the housing crisis, and we want to encourage housing, additional housing, or additional living spaces, and ADUs is a, is a big part of that strategy. So, you know, do we, what, I mean, how do we address that? Do we maybe just charge them like everybody else, and say, here's a revenue, you know, or do we incentivize that?
I mean, personally, I don't think the fee would be the determining factor of whether somebody builds an ADU or not, or whether somebody, you know, puts in a solar system or not. You know, there's so many other costs, and an ADU, obviously, the homeowner would get income from that, from renting out a unit, so I don't think that's.
But you only have, I mean, you can only rent out at certain market rates, and sometimes you cannot justify the cost.
Which are quite high.
Which are really high.
It's high, but you still have other expenses, too. Like, our sewer rates and our water rates have gone up higher. I mean, it's, you got, you got to look at the whole big picture, and I can say this, because I'm actually paying those things myself, and it's not like I am one of those people who have a high-tech job, so, you know, it's, it impacts people's ability to provide those things that we want in our city.
Councilwoman Pappen.
Yeah. I wish we would stay on track here. I mean, if somebody is putting in solar, they're going to get the benefit of reducing their electrical bills. So, there are all kinds of different aspects here. We are trying to focus, I believe, on cost recovery, and I think we should stay on that and try to get through these pages.
Yeah, well, you have to, you just can't say, just, let's do cost recovery all before. Of course, that's so easy. Why don't we just charge a huge fee? Because we're not paying for it. We're not paying for it, you know, the homeowner who's doing the adjustment. Let me finish. The person, the homeowner at home, who is going to pay for it, no big deal, right? They can pay for it 100%, that's not a problem.
Councilwoman.
Wait, I don't think the idea here is to charge and make money on anything. I think it's called recovery. So, let's stay focused on how we could be fiscally smart for the city of Millbrae.
Well, let me also say that when you build solar panels, you know, it's maybe a 10-year investment, you might be lucky to come out even.
And they have, they also have, you know, rental, solar leasing programs, they have ways to make it, pay loans, they have ways to make it very affordable. Councilwoman Pappen.
Yeah, I mean, at the beginning of this proposal, we're not here to make a profit. We are here to recover costs, as the initial speaker pointed out. And so, I think we need to stay focused on that, and having just put in solar, I'm hoping the recovery is a lot sooner than that, but there is lots of benefits here. So, I think we should get through this and stay focused on that.
Okay. Shall we move to the next page? Or a mechanical?
Solar, this page is mechanical and solar systems, again, with solar, many of those are determined by the state.
Okay, so we can't change those, but, you know, as was mentioned, there are many financial incentives to solar these days. Okay, move on. Where's, oh, okay.
Okay, these are some of the building miscellaneous fees, certificate of occupancy, temporary occupancy, re-inspections, plan review, an hourly rate for staff, appeal of a building official decision, which would be a time and materials cost. We currently have a technology fee and a documentation fee. We're proposing to merge those into a single fee, because we're using more technology for documentation, so just build a full system that handles both.
Oh, yes.
On those technology and documentation fees, are we included in there the maintenance of records? I don't know how many times, you know, nobody, we forgot where somebody put a pipe, or something like that. Documentation is extremely important as to how we are record-keeping, and that has been a problem throughout the city of Millbrae for decades. So, is that included in this fee?
Absolutely. The intention is to digitize many of the records, and City Clerk has started from their project already. They're, I don't know how far along they are, but they're, they're moving along.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that the?
Yes, Councilman Lee.
Is that also the appeal to the City Council? I saw, I saw like $4,000 to appeal.
That's on the planning fee. So, we'll get to that, that's.
Oh, we haven't gone there yet. Okay, never mind, sorry.
All right, move to the next one.
Okay. So, the next are the, the fees based on project valuation. So, again, there's a residential type, based on family dwellings, ADUs, accessory buildings related to residential, and then a separate set of fees for commercial, including multifamily, residential, and industrial. One item of note is that projects exceeding $1 million, these, these numbers are just used to calculate a deposit amount, they'll be charged at time and materials. For example, a project may need to be contracted out for a building inspector, and so, we would, we would then charge against a deposit that's collected.
I'm sorry, are these, these are total costs for review of these different projects?
So, there's a, there's a permit fee, which is this project valuation-based fee, there's an additional plan review fee, which is a 70% of that fee. I think there's a permit application fee, or permit? Permit issuance fee. And then MEP in addition? Okay, so those are the three. Okay.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, I think you passed this, but I don't know what an SB 1473 green fee is. I just need to know what it means.
The state passed legislation to gain money for the state to further their own green endeavors, so every building department charges that fee. There's also another fee on here that is included, that's not part of the building department fee, is every business license that's issued is assessed a $1 fee that also goes to the state. And this is to further the state's ability to have funding for them, for the departments to go green, from simple things such as recycled copy paper, to buying electric vehicles for the departments. So, that, the SB 1473 is funding for that mechanism.
Wow, so the city has to come up with the money to buy recycled copy paper, but the state gets us to buy their copy paper?
The, the person applying for building permit is the one being assessed that fee, yeah.
That's a sweet deal.
Okay. So, we have the various fees based on project valuation. Okay, so then.
Any, any other questions on, on those? So, there was valuation for basically residential-type projects, and then commercial and industrial-type projects. The department will be building a little bit more of a, of a manual around, you know, what, what each fee means, what's included, to assist as people are coming in to initiate a project. So, the next section is the planning fees. Maybe? Okay.
Page 12, I'm on.
So, again, with planning fees, we'll start with development applications, the, maybe this needs to be a little bit smaller. Elaine? Elaine?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was trying to get Elaine's attention, I'm sorry. Can you help me bring it? I need to make it smaller. Do you want to cancel this? Or you want to? Yeah. Okay, thanks. Okay. So, now, on the planning fees, starting with development application fees, plan and permit extension and modification fees. I don't know if you want to walk through these again, or just take on specific questions about them?
Vice Mayor Schneider.
This has to do with the public hearing notification fee, the appeal of Planning Commission decisions to City Council fee, and the legal notice. The first time I read this, I wasn't sure who was, who was subjected to those fees. So, if I'm a homeowner, and I come to the city with a remodel, and Planning Commission doesn't go my way, and I want to bring it to council, I pay the fees. But if I'm the neighbor next door who might be having something built that has been approved by Planning Commission, and will be affecting, could, in my view, affect the house, am I also paying that fee?
Yeah, you are. So, that's why the, I think what Councilmember Lee was talking about was the notion of whether or not there should be any level of subsidy as it relates to appeal, appeal fees. What we have here is full-cost recovery, but, but you are correct. So, this appeal fee would apply to either an applicant who doesn't like their decision, or to an interested party who also doesn't like the decision.
So, just using that one example of the house that wanted to raise their roof line up on Vallejo, that group that came out, they had to pay about $523 to bring it to us. That fee would jump to $4,547?
As is recommended here, yes.
I cannot support that.
More, more than that, it'd be over $6,000, $6,000, $7,000.
Yes, Councilman Lee.
Yeah, I, I think we should have a different tier for people who wants to appeal against a project, because we don't want this, we don't want to make it so prohibited that somebody can't voice their opinion, because they can't afford to appeal the process. So, I understand if the person really wants their addition, that's okay, you know, if they want, really want that bad, they can pay the $7,000 in appeals. But if you're a neighbor, I mean, and, and you're not happy with, in your neighborhood, then you got to go out and collect money from everybody to, to try to dissuade, or you should have, a person should have an opportunity to, to appeal a neighbor's project if they're not happy with it.
Yes, Councilman Pappen.
I question both aspects of that. Sometimes in filing legal actions, people who are successful get their money back. However, if I've got a neighbor who's just completely unreasonable, and is going to object to absolutely everything without any skin in the game, that's problematic, because you will get people write and laugh, you know, "I don't like the color you painted your house, so I'm taking it, I'm appealing," you know, they, people have just been known on both sides, some reasonable, some unreasonable. So, there has to be somewhere in the middle where people have consequences to objecting, and if they are successful, I don't know how this works, I'm just saying right here, if they're successful, maybe they, their fee is refunded. But if they're just being obstructionists, I don't think that's beneficial to anyone.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, but I don't, I don't think we should dissuade legitimate, you know, really dissuading, I mean, $7,000, I mean, that's what it's going to cost, because you have to pay for the, the hearing notification fee, the appeal itself, and the legal notice, so that's over $7,000. I don't know anybody who has $7,000 who's a retired person, doesn't like the fact that they have a window looking straight into their bedroom window, you know? I mean, it's, I'm just saying, it should, there should be a different level, and even if they can cost-recover, where are you going to find the $7,000 to put?
But may I ask for clarification? Do, do they not have an opportunity to appear at a Planning Commission meeting, or some, I'm not sure how this process would work, but I would assume for free, they could come to the Planning Commission meeting, or submit a letter to the Planning Commission objecting to any sort of project?
Councilwoman Leva?
I would agree, that, that's what I wanted to say, in the debate on my right and my left here, but there's a process in place, so this would be after the fact. This is, this is somebody that is not happy with the decision of a process that already took, that already took part.
Went through the process, right. It's already gone through the process.
So, if, it's, it would be somebody that was just angry at the idea.
Their neighbor, yeah.
Not a window that's looking into their living room.
So, Ms. Mayor, I think there's two processes here. Some remodeling plans, or. that we lived on a hill and the house behind us suddenly added another 10 feet to their house. Well, the planner at that time felt that we had no view, and when that house was built, when my family tried to fight it, I didn't live here at the time, but when they fought it, they lost, and we lost our view of the bay. Now, we don't have a view shed ordinance, view shed ordinances are difficult to get, but that would have meant that my parents, who basically lived paycheck to paycheck, would have to come up with $7,500 for something that did not go to a planning commission meeting. Now, maybe with our notification, as I just learned over the Christmas break, the notification for remodel is one house next to, one house across the street, possibly one house catty-corner. But given the strange way of our lot, sometimes you're, you're within that view shed or you're within that drainage shed, but you're not noticed. So you don't even know that this is happening until suddenly a wall goes up next to you that takes away everything that you bought the house for originally. So I, I think, and then there's the process that goes through planning. If we think of that house on Lamita a couple of years ago, the neighbor brought their side and they lost. The new house went in, it took away some of their sun, that was the way it is. We have other examples where, because we have no architectural design guidelines by neighborhood, people are putting in things that absolutely do not blend with the neighborhood. There's one up in Meadows that's horrible, and it'll be there forever. And that was done, I don't know how that one was done, it's so wrong. It has two front doors, it's just so wrong. There has to be a way that you can be, have your rights and not have to come up with $7,500. My parents would have had to have taken out an equity loan to come up with that $7,500. And that, I just don't think that's right.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree, it is, I think, too high for, I think if it's, if it's a neighbor objecting and doesn't really have much of a say, if it's, I kind of agree with Councilmember Lee, that if it's the homeowner, they could perhaps pay a little bit more than the neighbor can, because they're the ones getting the benefit from that property, addition to the property. But I think in my, you know, six years on the council, I think there have maybe been three appeals of a planning commission decision that was denied. So this is not, you know, something that we're doing all the time. I think if, if, I don't think cost recovery is that crucial in this situation, just because it's a very rare occurrence. If it's something that starts happening, you know, every week, I think we certainly can, can increase the fees, but, you know, I, I think maybe, you know, a modest increase from what it is now, just because it probably hasn't been changed in several years, I would be able to support, but this level of cost recovery, I think, is, is too high. And it, I think it de-democratizes kind of our, our planning process.
Yeah, I was just going to, to say, mayor and council, is, is this a dilemma that every council faces when they have this fee? And so my experience has been that for the applicant to appeal a decision, you know, as, as you're discussing, then the cost recovery is implemented. For somebody that is not the applicant, you know, surrounding neighbor or property owner, it's 50% of, of the fee. So as I think Councilmember Pappin had said, you don't want to incentivize somebody to appeal everything without some skin in the game. And so I would advise not to, you know, lower the fee significantly to kind of open the floodgates when people find out, hey, it doesn't cost me anything to, to, to appeal it, but they do have some, you know, reason for it, and there's interest and, you know, vested interest in that appeal decision. So it should be, our recommendation is something, but it could be, a lot of cities go 50% for the non-applicant to appeal.
I think even 50%, that would be, you know, about 30, 30.
2,000.
Yeah. Closer to, close to $4,000. That's still, that seems like a lot for, you know, because, because if, if they don't appeal it, then it's done at that point. And I, I don't know if there's a method for, you know, I think there have been a couple times where council members have brought things up that, from the planning commission. So, you know, potentially they could lobby their, one of us to, to bring something up from the planning commission, but, you know, that, that kind of goes around this whole process.
The current fee is 1279 right now.
Okay, correct. And I think, you know, the, the fee being what it is and the fact that we rarely get these appeals, I, I don't think we're encouraging anybody to go ahead and just, you know, deny, deny, deny. Councilman Pappin?
To the concern of the council members as far as financial strain on someone, I do think maybe we want to drop a footnote that somebody could speak before the council to bring something up like that, to bring it to our attention. As the mayor pointed out, these are very rare, but if someone feels strong and they're on a limited income, maybe we could implement something where you could, that could be presented to the council, and the council could decide whether they would like that brought forth. Just a suggestion.
I think there would be a due process issue, but we, we could do a time and materials up to a certain cap also for the non-applicant. So start out at, you know, the fee will be a time and materials based on the complexity of the appeal, up to a cap. And, I mean, that, that's at the discretion of the city council in terms of, what would that cap be? You know, 10% of the fee, 25% of the fee? I, I would just caution, you know, again, what, what Councilmember Pappin said, is there, there, there should be some incentive for somebody to appeal something, so we don't get, you know, all these appeals just because somebody doesn't like, you know, the color or something like that. So that, that's the only caution I'm saying. So it should be something.
I, I'm not just saying nothing, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
We should, yeah, we can increase.
And if we, we say, you know, say 25%, time and materials, and the cap would be 25% or 30, you know, a third of the fee or something like that.
I think 25% is.
Now, we can also, you know, look at these, and as I've communicated to the council, you know, any decision that's made, if we find that there's a fatal flaw or something that's a discrepancy, we'll, we'll bring that back to the city council for consideration adjustments, you know, so that we can move forward and see how things work, and if there needs to be adjustments, we will bring it back.
Well, the notification fee currently is at about 25%. The legal notice is a little bit below, close to, actually, close to 25% as well. So really, the only one that, that isn't is the appeal decision, that's well below that amount.
I'm sorry, where are you getting that? Oh, I.
I'm just, just doing quick mental math of the.
Oh, which part?
Comparing the current fee to the cost of service of those three items.
25%?
25%?
Of the cost?
Oh, no, it's more, it's triple. Anyway, I mean, quadruple. Anyway, it's, I, I think 25% is about 14, $1,500. I would go, I can go for that. I think that's, I think that's a reasonable barrier, but yet it's not prohibitive.
Yeah, I think that is appropriate, and, and again, it's, it's, you know, hopefully if there's an appeal, if there's something that's worthy of an appeal, there would be multiple neighbors that think it's worthy, not just one neighbor. So they'd be able to pool resources together to, to share a cost if they all agree that they don't want.
I'd agree with that, too.
A project to happen. So you recommend 25% for those three, for?
Up to, up to 25%.
Time and material.
Up to 25% for a non, not, full, full cost recovery for the applicant and for not, somebody else appealing, 25%.
25%.
Up to 25% of the proposed full cost, yeah.
Including legal notices and everything?
Yes.
Yes.
So up to 25% of each fee?
You're saying 25% of each?
It would include the public notice, it would, public hearing notice, it would include the appeal to the city council and the legal notice for the planning commission appeal.
The notification fee is currently 27%, so maybe we can just leave that one as it is. Otherwise it would be a reduction.
So this creates a cap of $1,907, using a 25% of each fee, except for the public hearing notification fee, which you have recommended.
Just leave it at 373, yeah.
So, well, a deal within the resolution, but I just want to be sure that that's what we're looking at, we're on the same page? Okay.
Okay. Anything else on this page, or can we move on to the next one? Okay, let's move on.
Next is environmental determinations, conditional use permits, exceptions, variances. Again, calculating from cost of service and recommending full cost recovery in, in these cases.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. So move right along to the next one?
So next is design review. Again, similar set of recommendations.
Oh, yes, Councilman, Councilman Pappin?
A question, if we do, and I hope we do, get a design review going here, where would that fit in?
Once we bring that ordinance and policy to the council, then we would add that design review fee, and it probably would not be a fixed fee, it would be a deposit for that process.
Hopefully we can get one quickly. Thank you.
I have a question for all other new construction, so that would be, you know, new housing tracks. Commercial or, you know, large multifamily, something like that, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, it would, would it make sense to maybe have that on a square footage calculation?
Right, so at the, at the end of the fee sheet, what you'll notice is there is a new category for what we're calling large projects, which are projects that are greater than 50,000 square feet and/or 50 units. So really what this would be capturing is sort of that, that in-between universe of commercial or larger, or housing projects on a design review fee at the $9,000 mark, and then if it goes over, then it would be a deposit-based fee.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking about our TOD 1 and 2, and how much time we spend on those design reviews, it's much more than $9,000 for, for each of those. Let's see, Councilman Lee?
Sorry, so, these fees are for 100% cost recovery for staff review, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just skipping ahead real quick, but you also have this hourly rate, so I guess you can explain that to me later, right? So, something totally different, all right.
Yeah, that's typically those, for example, those large projects, so if staff's working on it versus contracting it out, so sometimes we'll contract that to an environmental consultant, or if staff works on it instead, we want to be able to charge their hourly time to the project.
And those are for deposit accounts?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, you're, okay, so now I'm learning that these fees are what contractors are charging us? These are our own staff fees? Okay, so you, what you just said is that sometimes we contract out for certain projects?
On those deposit-based large projects that, that Brad just mentioned, you, we may contract some of that out, and then we charge, direct charge that out to the applicant.
Okay.
Something like the TOD projects that we're working on today.
Okay, but that's not here, so.
That's not what these.
Okay, so that's what confused me, I don't, I don't like.
These are typically done by staff.
Okay, good.
But occasionally staff will work on a large project, and we wanted to be sure to have a fully loaded rate to recover their time.
Right.
Onto a large deposit project.
Right. Okay, so my question here is, so if it's staff review, like a small 500 square feet, I understand that, you're asking for it's $4,500. Let's say you're doing a bigger than that, right? So are we charging the staff review and the planning commission review, or is that a different type of fee?
Right, so it's, so all of this is sort of threshold-driven, right? So, for instance, down in kind of the middle part of this, where it says single-family addition PC review versus single-family addition staff review, that's a threshold question. If you have a single-story addition that's, you know, basically less than 500 square feet, that's a level at the staff, that's the $4,500. The next level up, two-story addition, more than 500 square.
Unless you're not adding, so it's not altogether.
Right, no, they're, they're all separate.
I want to clarify that, make sure that it's not on top of each.
These are different fees for different projects.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Schneider, do you have a comment, a question?
If I'm on the right page? If I'm on the right page? The temporary special event permit, so from $251 to $1,592. Didn't we go through a form where everybody applying for special events has to basically put all the information on a form? And in which case, really, $1,592? Or am I, what kind of special events are we talking about here?
What I believe is the vision here is if someone were trying to do like a private event, not, maybe not like a community-based event, but a, like a special event that maybe is a one-day private party or something of that nature. So maybe there's going to be a caterer, and there's going to be a large gathering in a building, and they're going to be in the outdoor, say, like an office party, that, that might be something that we would grant a one-day special temporary use permit for.
Okay, because most of the special event ones, we tend to eat those costs.
Correct.
When they come to us to get their permit anyway.
Right, and I think those sort of fall into a different category. This is if, this is if it were a sort of a land use request on private property.
Private, private party, like for instance.
Okay, so we had big backyards and somebody was having a wedding, because my neighbor had a wedding in her backyard, but she simply came and knocked on all of our doors and asked if it was okay.
Right, so we would refine our messaging to the public on that, that in the event that the special use permit is required, then you would have this planning review fee to look at.
Okay.
Where is parking going to be, and how's catering going to occur, and noise, and hours of operation?
Wow, so it was her brother's second or third marriage, it was family of 20 people, we're going to charge $1,500?
Especially on a third marriage.
In theory, we, that's, that's what is, is here.
I just think sometimes be careful what we're getting ourselves into. I mean, I could see if this was, you know, one of the billionaires who are Larry Ellison's throwing a party in his backyard, because I've been to one of those. You know, I can tell you that that's quite a thing.
And I think a private house party is something a little bit, is different than that.
Okay.
Gathering a friend is different than that, and I think if it's, I think rises to the level of being an event, level of being that may have neighborhood, it may have neighborhood, that's, you know, that's where we're, that's where we're going to set that threshold.
I'd love to see this one come out, to see this one, we come back to it, we've had a few experiments.
And hopefully, and hopefully we can get the, get the, we can process, we can process quickly and efficiently enough that it doesn't actually cost us $1,500, especially for these, you know, recurring community events where we end up, you know, giving, yeah, exactly. Okay, let's go to the next page.
Next page is wireless communications. Is this a commercial, non-commercial area? Yes, this is commercial, non-commercial area.
Page numbering helps people. Yep, page numbering.
Yeah.
Actually, I have a question on this one. Are there, I keep hearing about state laws coming up and FCC rulings that limit the ability to charge fees on wireless antennas and things like that?
There are some specifics around design and as well as what we can charge in terms of a lease if they use.
Okay, a lease, okay, that's what those were for, okay.
I've not seen anything on, for example, the entitlement.
Okay.
So with the 5G systems going up, and with many residents being concerned about electromagnetic radiation, how would they be charged if they wanted to file an appeal? I think this is out of our hands, isn't it? Most of the 5G activity or 4G or any of it is, we don't have a say.
So they won't be able to appeal that decision because that's federal law under FCC. So this, this would only pertain to. So this would only pertain to the aesthetics.
Okay.
Of the installation, not the.
Right. Not the right to.
Not the right to do it, but should they make it look like a fake tree versus this big thing hanging off somebody's bedroom window?
Correct.
Or.
Time, place, and manner.
Or if somebody decides to rent their roof out to a private cell company, they would need a permit, and that would be the process.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Okay, and then a set of miscellaneous fees. We touched on these a little bit earlier. Hourly rate for staff review. These are, again, things that are outside of those first-page projects that are more fixed in cost, but for those threshold projects that, for example, end up in a deposit. We've also included engineering staff hourly rate for those projects. For example, we talked, we use the TODs as an example, as a common example. There are some other projects in a deposit-based status. And the second area is just, it's not the total fee, it's the recommended initial deposit. And then as that deposit is used, or if we issue contracts to outside consultants, we would increase the deposit correspondingly.
Okay. Oh, yes, Vice Mayor.
Our mind kind of goes backwards. It's the fees for signage. We spent a great deal of time on signage for the two TODs. And I know we're in the process of looking at a business improvement district or a community improvement district, whatever we're calling it. Signage. Some of our stores have signage that we've mandated in the TODs, but then they also put signage everywhere else. Where does all that everywhere else? And I say that probably because I'm liaison to the Community Enhancement Committee, and for years, their biggest bugaboo downtown were all of the signs that get glued to the windows. So if we make signage too onerous to go through, are we leading people to putting things stuck to the glass windows?
Yeah, I think, Councilwoman, that's a different issue. We already have an ordinance that does not allow that, so it's really a code enforcement issue more than it is a planning, design, and building fee.
Okay. And if we do get the BID approved, would any signage fees fall underneath that?
No.
It would still come this program? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any others on this page? Okay, let's go on to the next one.
So the last one is the single fee in the Finance Department. At your last hearing, you adopted a alarm permit fee. That's, for example, for an alarm through a private company. If your alarm goes off, it rings that private company. They will call dispatch if needed. This alarm monitoring fee are for alarms that go directly to county dispatch, and they dispatch from there. There's some equipment that the city would contribute to, and there's a cost to county communications for their services, as well as city time in that. So those users that have that fee have a lower, receive a couple of false alarms at no cost versus users that have the, just a basic permit. So we just worked with the county on their rates using the same methodology, but we worked on that at staff level to establish that fee.
And this would be an annual fee for this particular item. The other ones are a one-time fee. This would be an annual fee.
Correct.
Okay. So we have discussed a number of things here. I think we had consensus regarding the appeal fees for planning commission decisions. And there was some discussion earlier at the beginning about, you know, various home improvements for energy and water efficiency, things like that. What's the direction of the council on that issue? I don't know if we really resolved that.
So we will provide footnotes on our adopted fee schedule and tie that into links and information for reimbursement programs, both through PCE, the state, and federal. That was one of the things, that was the direction.
Yes, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Years ago, the Sierra Club did a survey of solar permit fees in the three counties that the Loma Prieta chapter does, and they found at the time that Millbrae had the highest solar permit fees. What happened then is Millbrae, and what they did is they peer pressured all cities across the three counties, and most of them dropped it to zero. I can't remember if Millbrae went to zero. It did stimulate solar activity. I understand now that the state mandated its $500 everywhere, so that argument's out. I guess I would like to say for any of these things that could be in some way be a climate change resiliency fee, that we come back and look at them and see if they are annually or every two years, are they preventing certain beneficial behaviors from happening? The one that I think I'm thinking most of, but maybe there'll be PCE money for that, is when you're an apartment manager putting in EV charging stations in apartments, or one of the reasons it prevents apartment dwellers from being able to get an electric car. But that's expensive. And now the apartment owner can always raise the rents to cover it, but then that becomes an affordable housing issue. So if we can just have a mechanism to come back and look at these and see if they're causing problems, see how well the rebate programs come back, and we put it on the calendar, and we know we come back in a year or two and look at it.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. Councilman Lee?
You know, I really think that we shouldn't even charge for gray water system. I want to encourage people to put gray water systems in, especially with, you know, our drought-ish situation. You know, it's kind of like, it's just adding insult to injury.
Councilman Papin?
I think a lot of research and background went into all these fees. And again, the primary goal here is cost recovery and only cost recovery. I think it's important that we leave them as they are right now, as far as solar and all of that, especially in apartment buildings. They are definitely giving rebates, and the county is encouraging buildings to put them in. So those aspects are already out there. Should they be removed at a later date, then I think we can readdress these issues. I did have one question on, we've had issues in the past regarding people making improvements, and then all of a sudden, an inspector shows up and says, oh, hey, you need sprinklers. I just wonder where we are on things like that. Surprise. Here's your application, and you need more money. Or, as a resident happened recently, they were told to increase their sewer line unjustly due to a contractor that we hired, and then because they didn't realize that or they were told that after the fact, they were charged another $5,000 by the city of Millbrae because the trench was left open for a period of time. So things like this, where you take out an original permit, and then all of a sudden you're told something else, and the city tax on fees, I have extreme problems with. So the sprinkler issue, I didn't see anything here on sprinklers, so maybe that law's changed. But in the past, we have had homeowners who did improvements, and some inspector showed up and said, you need sprinklers. So if that's no longer an issue, I'm very glad to hear that, because I don't see it in here. But.
Is that a fire subsidy?
Yeah, specific to the sprinklers and the fire fees, that's because you guys contract for fire services. Those fees are set by that fire agency. So that's not a fee that you set and/or adopt. It's a separate fee from a separate entity, so.
But it is a city fee.
We do adopt it as a fee, but it's set by.
But it's set by a different agent. It's much like the county fees or state fees, where technically you're adopting it, but it's being imposed by somebody else.
Okay.
Specific to the sprinkler one.
And I think the message here is not necessarily the fee. It is being able to have the plan check and standard of care to where that error is not made.
That's right.
And that that's a different issue. That's more of a quality.
The homeowner's not surprised if someone late date about a requirement of that nature. That should be part of the planning process upfront.
Yeah, that's an error on, not the fee, but on the.
Is there a fee in here for, we've heard, I don't know if you call them horror stories of great surprises, where somebody came in to remodel a bathroom, and they got all the permits and stuff, and then the inspector went out, and there's just one wall left of the house, and abuse was obviously occurring. So what kind of fees do we have for that?
Right. So if you recall when we did the building code update earlier this year, one of the new provisions was to allow, to have the authority to fine folks if they go above and beyond the scope of the work that's in their permit. And we do have the ability to do a one, two, three type of, you know, shame on you one, shame on you twice, all the way up to 10 times the building permit fee. So we do have that stick, if you will, for when those types of projects are occurring.
Is that recovering your costs? Because that's my only goal here, is that I need to know that, besides the fact they've offended us greatly.
Sure. So first, there would be the fee for going above and beyond the scope of work. Next, we would say, now you need to come in with a set of plans that truly recognize what that scope of work is, and then they're going to pay these fees here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if I may, anybody that's listening that's a licensed contractor or architect, we are seriously reporting licensed contractors to the state board. We've reported three contractors this year that have done just that to the state board. So I think it's important that we provide great service. We get people in and out. We avoid errors. But on those times when people do take advantage and violate, that we mean business now in the city of Millbrae.
Councilman Leva?
A follow-up on that?
Sure.
So is this on our website? Because the homeowner doesn't know until, like, a contractor screws them over. Do we have something on our website that says, if you feel you've been ripped off or something, contact?
We do not, but let me work with planning and our chief building official to get some public announcements out on our website.
That'd be great.
That would help, yeah.
Councilman Leva?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Lee?
Is there any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
Okay, I'll make my comment later.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just a couple of things. We haven't adopted reach codes yet. Should we adopt reach codes? Do we have to make any modifications to any of these fees?
Do you want to define that, please?
I could attempt to. Reach codes in a simplified form are to electrify buildings to reduce the use of natural gas. Really simplified version.
Right. So there's still, that process is ongoing. The county has been very active in trying to get municipalities throughout Seminole County to adopt reach codes. We have some analysis that has suggested that some of the codes are even more reaching than what we initially thought they were. So staff is still doing some analysis on those with the anticipation of bringing those back before council for your consideration in the near term.
Okay, so there'd be adjustments then if there had to be at that.
If needed, yes.
Then, just to kind of clarify, with Councilwoman Papin talking about existing programs, at the Peninsula Clean Energy Strategic Retreat, they went over the existing programs and the pilot projects. The pilot, there are no set projects that I'm aware of that give an apartment or condominium owner, well, it would be an apartment owner, a rebate for installing EV charging stations. There's a pilot for it. There's a pilot where that entity got $75,000 to test things out, but those programs don't exist yet, so we have to be careful with that. And my last thing, if we had a climate action plan, and it looked at teardowns of housing versus rebuilding from scratch, we're going to get into the concept of embodied energy. Every building material has a number of energy inputs into it, which have a greenhouse gas effect. And when you do a monster house teardown, we should be charging more for that, frankly. If we wanted a fee for teardowns as opposed to remodels, there's a lot of energy in our existing structure that we need to recognize on top of the zero-waste aspects of it. So I'd be happy for you to come back with a fee on teardowns. If you look at what's happened in Hillsborough, where one house has been torn down three times, it's going into its third time, and these, it just breaks my heart, the amount of resources that went into those.
Okay. Councilman Lee?
Is there some sort of way of providing financial assistance to, like, a senior who needs to remodel her kitchen because it got flooded or something, without having to charge them, like, you know?
Hopefully, they have insurance, right?
They cover it. They cover the permit.
Can I tell you what happened to us when our kitchen flooded? We didn't have to pay a complete remodeling fee. We paid inspection fees, but not remodeling. So I thought it was very fair, because the insurance did not cover everything, because the cabinets were 29 years old. So they don't, they do not make you whole.
Right. And I realize that, and that's what I'm saying. And if you're on a fixed income, you know, it can mean the difference of having a kitchen and not having a kitchen.
But the insurance will cover it.
No, the kid, in an ideal world, the insurance will cover everything, but it doesn't.
It's like the work center.
You still have to pay a deposit, I mean, you know, a deductible, and you still have to pay for the inspection fees.
Is there any recommending that we have, like, a low-income.
Yes.
Program or something?
Yes.
Do other cities have, let's look at Landing Lane, that for years flooded every year. So those people had to replace stuff every year. If it included a bathroom, I think the permit fees are, it's not a brand-new remodel. I don't know, Wayne, that's an interesting concept. I don't.
Yeah, I don't know what the city.
Or a FEMA, but you have to be at large enough flood, which is part of the problem with Landing Lane. They're not large enough, there are not enough homes for it to always qualify as a FEMA disaster, although it did a couple of years ago. Former city manager Reins did make it a FEMA project.
I mean, if your water faucet pipes break, and, you know, that just, or your roof leaks and ruins, you know.
We're talking a flood in a kitchen to the flood of an area.
I'm just saying, what I'm saying is it doesn't have to be some major thing to cause a problem that wipes out your kitchen. It could be a small thing.
We don't see FEMA for a kitchen.
No, no, we're not talking about FEMA. I'm just talking about, you know, just the fact that somebody who is low-income has to replace their kitchen, order whatever, and they can't afford a lot of the fees.
I mean, I would ask maybe our consultants if that's something that other cities often do, from your experience.
It's not something that you would typically see on a fee schedule. I mean, I think you always, as a resident in most places, you always have the option to petition a council for a fee waiver, generally speaking. And you could always put that in place, that someone has the ability to do that, come state their case to council. I think if you're talking about floods and fires, whether they rise to the FEMA level or not, a lot of times, insurance, assuming that you have it, will pay for not only the materials to rebuild, but the fees associated with the permits required for that. I think to the level, though, that you're speaking about is more about kind of helping out lower-income families. And that is, I think, that's a policy discussion and a policy decision. And it would be something where the council maybe might say, we're going to set aside X number of dollars a year, or something like that, and that you then let the community know that you could come and petition to use some of those dollars to offset fees. That's something that has happened. It's not, it's not very common, certainly not here in the Bay Area, but not in other jurisdictions in Southern California and the Central Valley that I have seen. But again, it's not, it's not that it isn't done. If you wanted to do it, you could do it, because again, it'd be a policy decision. And you wouldn't be, you'd be reducing a fee, as, you know, so as long as you're not charging more than, you can make those kinds of policy decisions.
Yes.
And let me mention that a lot of agencies, including ourselves, have made that distinction at times. We always say, oh, let's look at somebody who has low income based on, you know, PG&E's determination or whatever, determination that they qualify to have, you know, a certain break on certain things, or certain fees.
I would just ask our Finance Department if this has been an issue that's come up with, you know, homeowners that have had trouble paying the fees and what generally happens if that's the case.
Specific to building fees, I don't know of any, now that it's community development, so they typically come to us to pay. Our fees have not been changed since 2013, so they're much lower, I can assure you, than what they've paid in Burlingame or Hillsborough, and it's often the contractor, not the homeowner. So, yeah, we have not, we have not received that. Again, it's something we can monitor and come back.
And I'll tell you what's going to happen, is that those people are just going to do it without, under the table. They won't tell you about it. They won't come with permits, and they won't pay a fee.
I think I would recommend, you know, maintaining the fees as recommended and monitoring the situation. And if this is something that we see occurring, we could look into, you know, a low-income program using maybe the PG&E care program, whatever it's called. But probably not at this time, I would say. Vice Mayor Snyder?
I would support that. My question is, I'm trying to think of people who have worked in our home, and then they would tell. would tell me stories, they're renting an apartment, or they're renting a house, and the kitchen flooded, and the landlord left it with a big hole in the kitchen for months. I wonder if some of this is landlords who don't get around to doing something. I'm not sure the fees or anything, it's just their way of running a business. But, could we, or do we ever hear from any of our people who are renters and having problems living in a substandard living condition?
I think that's a different discussion, I think.
Okay. I just, I mean, maybe we need to start collecting that data so that we know if it's anything more than anecdotal.
Can I close the public hearing?
Yes, let's close the public hearing. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Snyder, and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
The motion to close the public hearing passed unanimously.
Okay. Let me clear the board. And we have a motion from Councilwoman Pappin to accept the fee.
If I may, I wanted to just note that this resolution does include an automatic escalator with each fiscal year, using CPI. The other one was written a little bit differently. We may have to bring that back. But, it won't require another hearing and approval.
I like the automatic escalator. Oh, the escalator's always running?
Got to have that. Or else we'll eventually forget about these fees. Sorry, Vice Mayor?
Of everything that we talked about tonight, the one thing that I didn't hear, a plan or a resolution, was the fee for a bathroom, when it's a full bathroom versus a half-bath, because there is a difference in the amount of plumbing on there. There could be other projects that are in the same thing. How do we... I just don't think it's fair, somebody coming in to put in a new toilet for a half-bathroom is paying the full fee.
Can we get change in the motion? Can people... Are you guys okay with the...
I don't... How would staff remedy that?
So, you're talking about the plumbing fees?
The bathroom remodel fee?
That's the first one.
That's the one example that I could see in there that seems inequitable. Inequitable.
So, you're envisioning a scenario where perhaps, like, a toilet or something like that, has just changed out?
Well, I don't think that requires, then, a permit fee. That's just the plumbing fee, which, if you go down on a per fixture basis?
Well, then, what if it's, I'm going to put in a bathroom as opposed to remodeling an entire bathroom?
If you put in a half... We would consider that a remodel. You could have a half-bath that's, you know, 500 square feet, for example. Because a half-bath is defined as not having a shower or a tub.
I just think in the world that I...
And it could be...
Half-bathrooms are usually a closet.
But, they could be 500 square feet, where a full bath could be, you know, 150 square feet with a tub and a shower and a sink, and...
That's the only one that I am...
So, I think we go... I think in this case, I think that you're interested in was, let's say that I'm, you know, my shower pan is damaged. That's going to be a fixture fee, not a remodel fee.
No. My difference was, in terms of the number of inspections, you have to have more inspections if you're redoing your shower or bathtub because of the waterproofing than you do with a half-bathroom, where you're not dealing with waterproofing. You're not dealing with greenboard, you're not dealing with those kinds of things. So, there's just fewer inspections with that. Therefore, to me, the cost recovery would be less.
I think what we could look at is defining in the fee schedule, for example, using that per-device fee if it's lower. So, there's the per-device, the permit issuance fee. So, we can clarify that through the... So, for example, if it's a half-bath, it's a tub and a sink. Mike left, so I don't have all the answers. But, we can look at the more appropriate way to charge if it's not a full bathroom.
So, I understand. There's a replacement that we don't charge that, you know, replacement of fixtures and that type of thing, that we don't charge the fee for the remodel. We just charge the per-fикьr fee versus an addition or remodel. So, we can... I think it's fair, actually, because we don't... You know, if it's a shower pan or something like that, it's 10 minutes more, you know, on the inspection. The thing is, is...
It's a whole additional trip.
Reviewing, yeah, correct the trips, and...
A lot of fixed costs, though, right? Just in terms of permit review, whether...
Yeah.
There's a whole extra water. I had it done, so when you have to...
When you do that, the inspector comes back and spends at least another half an hour or an hour, when I had it done. So, that's considerable more time than if you're just doing a half-bathroom.
And I will say, just, you know, to be fair to the city, it depends on the quality of the contractor also. So, no matter how minor or how major, it kind of depends on the quality of work. But, we'll look at the equity issue on that and do a little bit more research and find out.
Okay. So, we have a... Yes, we have a motion by Councilwoman Pappin, and a second from Councilwoman Oliva. Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I just wanted to state that I'm not going to be supporting this, not because I don't think we do 100%. I mean, Toshka, I agree that the work that Councilwoman Pappin, she makes a strong case for it. But, I just feel that there are certain standards we should give opportunities to incentivize ADUs. And also, I want to say that some, I think there is, like, give an opportunity to help those people in need. So, I don't think we're doing that. But, most 80%, 85% of those people who are doing remodeling, I don't have a problem with 100% cost recovery.
Okay. Your votes, please.
Item number 10 passed with a vote of 4 to 0, with Councilmember Lee dissenting.
4 to 1.
4 to 1.
I'm 0, thank you.
So, to be clear, we're adopting the resolution with Exhibit A and adding new appeal fees for the non-applicant. That will be the 25%, except for the one fee that will stay the same.
Thank you.
Can we emphasize for the record how much money we've lost in the past? Was it $800,000?
$850,000.
$850,000. Thank you.
Okay. Next, on our agenda, we have existing business item number 11. This is the informational report on the draft final classification and compensation study, as well as resolution approving the revised salary schedule for maintenance worker classifications effective December 29, 2019.
What did you say?
And we have our administrative services director, Angela Lewis.
This evening, I will be doing a brief PowerPoint presentation on the classification and compensation study that was completed by CPSHR, our firm that was retained to do the comprehensive study. And after that, I will be going into the second part of my report, which is to adopt a resolution to approve revised salary schedules effective December 29 of 2019, which includes a 5% equity increase to the job classification in the maintenance worker series. So, with that, I will begin the PowerPoint presentation. Let's see here. So, we'll be going over a brief overview of the methodology for the classification and compensation pieces of the study. Oh, sorry. I should get closer. Great. So, I'll be doing a brief overview of both the classification and compensation methodology, and then just doing an overview of the compensation data in the study as well. So, CPSHR was retained to do both the class and comp study. And the classification study was to review the datas, review the duties and responsibilities of each of the positions that we have in the city, recommend a classification structure, make... Develop or recommend classifications, do an FLSA designation evaluation, and then recommend the allocation of positions to newer revised classifications. So, overall, the study encompassed 80 full-time positions and 46 part-time positions allocated to 90 classifications. The next part of the study was for the compensation portion. And for that, we looked at 15 agencies in our area, and we looked at a total of 30 benchmark classifications. So, in developing the cities that we looked at, we did work with the Teamsters. They were part of the study. And we came up with the cities of Burlingame, Belmont, Foster City, Half-Moon Bay, Pinole, San Bruno, San Carlos, San Mateo, South San Francisco, and then East Bay Municipal Utilities District, the Astero Municipal Improvement District, and the San Francisco International Airport. So, we were looking, again, for agencies that were similar in size, similar in scope, geographic proximity, and agencies where some of our former employees may have gone to. And in some instances, we do have some specialized job classifications, because we have our own treatment plant. So, we did need to look at different agencies so that we could get a complete picture in our survey. So, the benchmark classifications are listed here. We did a total of 30 benchmark classifications. And there is a mixture of the different classifications that we looked at. They were in either the entry level, the journey level, supervisory level, management, and department head level. So, we had a good mix of classifications that was reviewed. We then identified equivalent positions and comparator agencies, and collected salary and benefit data, and then calculated the labor market position. So, the total compensation in the report includes benefits that are provided to all of, or a majority of, the employees in the classification or bargaining unit. So, this would be insurance benefits, or deferred compensation, and retirement. What is not included in the total compensation is something that is not given to all of the employees. And this could be like a special classification pay, or if we had bilingual pay, that sort of thing. So, that was not included in the study. So, the first table here, which has wonderfully large numbers that you can see very clearly, is the compensation highlights for the management and confidential unit. And when looking at all of these, we provided the labor market, the median and the mean with just the base salary and the total compensation. For purposes of our discussions, and when we were looking at, working with the union, we took the market median with the total compensation. So, it includes the salary, the benefits, and it is the median number that we have, which is the middle number. It is not the mean, not the average. Because if you do use the average, and you have a very high number, or you have a very low number, that could skew the results. So, by going with the median, you are at the middle, and that is a very... I don't want to say very, but it's a more accurate number to use. So, as you can see, with our management unit, the city is 4.73% below the market median than our comparators.
Angela, if I may, for the council, this is page 9 and 10 on Attachment 1 of the staff report.
Thank you. Moving next, we looked at the Teamsters miscellaneous unit. And here, you can see the positions that we reviewed, again, looking at the total compensation in salary and benefits. And we took the median number again. And overall, all of these numbers here, overall, on average, they are below by 17.35%. Now, if you look at some of the classifications, and as I just go off on a bit of a tangent, if you're looking at some of the maintenance worker ones, that one is quite low in comparison to our neighboring cities. And when talking with the Teamsters and looking at equity adjustments, and part of the reason why the report tonight mainly focuses on the series, the maintenance series, is because of the numbers you see here at this report. They are quite below average than most, and they are more so as a total group than any other, I'd say, one or two employees within the city. We did look at the other unit we have with the Teamsters, the sanitation unit. And again, on the market median, they were 3.9% below the average. And this table just illustrates all of the figures that I just went through. And again, looking at the total average, market median citywide, the city is about 10, 10.36% below average. So, this concludes just this compensation and classification study portion. It just tells you an overview of what we did in the year that we had, or just under a year that we had with CPSHR to do the report. Again, like they did many other things for us, but I wanted to just highlight tonight, mainly the compensation piece, because we are asking you to make an action this evening in updating our salary schedules. And so, what I'd like to do is just give a little brief history on what we did with this report in our negotiations. So, when we did labor negotiations back in May, in June of 2019, we used the draft information in this report to work with the Teamsters. And we came up with a tentative agreement that council approved back in July. And we set forth some process to start looking at equity adjustments. If you recall, we created a Step F on the salary schedule for all of the represented employees. Within that tentative agreement, there were two other sections that the city was required to work with, that we agreed to work on with the Teamsters. And one was in Section 4, and that was the creation of the maintenance worker 2 job classification. And we would be working on that. So, that job classification would become effective the first pay period after July 1 of 2020. The second section, which was Section Number 5, we agreed to do equity adjustments for those classifications that were found to be below the market range, and to work on a plan on how we would address those. And we needed to get that done by October 31 of 2019. We were able to do that with the Teamsters. We met with them and looked at all of the job classifications. And going back, we found that there were... The classifications for the maintenance worker, lead maintenance worker, senior maintenance worker, the maintenance technicians, and street sweeper operator were between 12% and 26% below the area median. So, we proposed a 5% equity increase to these affected job classifications. And that would then bring these classifications closer to the market median and align with the class and comp study that we did. And we agreed that we would do this so that it would go to the period that would include January 1 of 2020. So, we'd have to bring it to December 29. That's when the pay period starts. So, we worked with the union on that piece. And then, the second part of it is the maintenance worker 2 job classification. So, creating this maintenance worker 2 classification will help to provide some growth for our employees, and help to have them a place to move up to, and will retain, or hopefully retain, our employees and not have them leave to go elsewhere. So, we are in the process of working on a draft job description for that maintenance worker 2 classification. We hope that it will, and anticipate that it will become effective, you know, after July 1 of 2020, as we've agreed to with the union and RTA. And at this point, right now, the other thing that we're working on would be to also update the evaluation form, which would include an area to show for growth and promotion from the maintenance worker 1 to a maintenance worker 2 category. So, we are on track with this. We are considering, we'll be meeting with the union, again, to bring forward our draft and work with them to refining and finalizing that. And hopefully, you'll see this coming up, forthcoming with our future negotiations. So, you'll be getting some more information as we move forward with this. Overall, the fiscal impact for the increase for the 5%, for the remainder of this fiscal year would be $60,000, which 30,000 would come from the general fund, and 30 would come from the other remaining enterprise funds. And then, overall, for the fiscal year 2021, it would be 120,000, with 60,000 coming from the general fund and 60 from the enterprise funds. So, if you adopt the resolution this evening, it will update the salary schedule for those classifications in that maintenance worker series. And it will become effective as of December 29, 2019. So, this concludes my report, and if you have questions, I'm happy to take them.
Okay. Councilman Lee?
Thank you, Angela, and your staff, and everybody else worked on this very difficult and very big report. I agree with most, I guess, I don't have any problems. I thank you for trying to provide opportunity... I thank you for trying to provide opportunities for our staff to grow. I mean, in terms of promotional opportunities, I think that's important. So if we approve all of this, and we try to meet all of these salary increases, so what we just approved, the schedule fees, then it would no longer be 100% cost recovery, right? Just clarification.
Well, no, that's not, because the 5% increase that we're proposing you adopt this evening is for maintenance workers, and they're not included in those cost recovery fees. The fees this evening were for services for plan check and that type of thing. But in the future, yes, we're going to have to watch that, so that's a good note and a good point.
That's a good comment. Councilman Alvin?
Well, I just want to say thank you very much for that report. I like the fact that you looked in from the top of the mountain down, because it wasn't just about the salaries, which were obviously so important, but yet you're alleviating a lot of problems in the future. So thank you, Angela.
Thank you. Just to be very clear, it's 27 employees that make up this group that we're looking at. So when I did the presentation to the staff, I had to say, you know, look, we know that there are areas that we'll look at, and we will, at some point, get to addressing some of these large disparities. But we have a huge group of employees, a majority of our employees that we have that are severely, you know, below the mark, and we need to bring or help bring them up to equity so that we can, you know, retain them. And also, if we retain our employees, you know, then we don't have to keep training people or recruiting or doing all that other stuff, which is a cost.
And in the long run, the cost is probably much greater for us. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, too. It was great reading. I'm fully in support, but I have a couple of questions. Number one, and it wasn't part of the recommendations tonight, we've got a couple of worker categories that are under the $15 amount. And the state law for minimum $15 per hour goes into effect soon?
$15 an hour for minimum wage would be 2022. So we do adopt, right now, we're on the schedule, on just the schedule where we should be, where minimum wage, which just went up, it's on just first, and I believe it's at $13 an hour. So we are in compliance, we are in compliance with the minimum rate for the state right now. I'm trying to find it, I thought it was on 1280 still in here. So it was my understanding that we will be coming back and looking at the minimum wage?
Correct. You are correct. We are working on a minimum wage and wage theft ordinance, bringing the city council forward.
Excellent. My other questions are going to sound like, what does it have to do with this? I appreciate all the work that our maintenance workers are doing, and sometimes they don't get a lot of love. And what I am hoping that the city might do is have a website that lists the projects that they've completed, what they're working on, what are some of the things coming up, so that the public can see what they're doing. Because there have been some great strides in the city, but it's really hard to communicate. So at least, if we can get it on the website, we can say, ah, look, they, whatever the project might be on that. And then my other one was, street sweepers. It's a very valuable service. It's going to be part of our climate resiliency plan. When we are so inundated with cars, the street sweeper can't get to the gutter to pick up the leaves or the litter in them. So I'm hoping that you will come back to us, staff will come back to us, with a plan to go back to what Millbrae used to have, which we had to use our, move our cars, like on my street, I had to move my car Tuesday morning if it was parked on the street. So I just want to make life easier for the street cleaner so that he can actually do his or her job.
All right. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. Your votes, please.
Ms. Mayor, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Item number 11 passed unanimously.
Yes.
I was going to say, this is a good discussion this evening, and I think it's appropriate for me to publicly state, I just thank all of our employees for coming together and being team players on this and understanding where our maintenance workers were. And my hat goes off to all of our employees for meeting and understanding where we are, and really working together to get us healthy, one step at a time. So on behalf of all our employees and the team, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, this was a wonderful collaboration between our staff and Teamsters local of age 56.
Mr. Mayor, for the board?
Yes, Councilman Peppin.
Would anyone have an objection to moving up item 14? We do have a guest speaker.
That would be fine, and we do have a speaker slip for that as well. So, yeah, let's go ahead and move on to item 14.
Thank you.
The resolution on seamless transportation.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. We do have Mr. Ian Griffiths here this evening from Seamless Bay Area, who will be providing a presentation here shortly. But just in terms of introduction, this item is to consider a resolution supporting the idea of a seamless transportation system throughout the Bay Area. Currently, as you may know, there are 27 different transportation agencies in the Bay Area. Here in the city of Millbrae, as small as we are, because we have the multimodal transit station known as the BART station, we deal with four different transit agencies. And we have found that in dealing with four different transit agencies, for one station that services BART patrons, Samtrans patrons, Caltrain patrons, that we run into a lot of conflict and issues in terms of the ultimate service delivery, whether it be, you know, ticketing, parking, those types of issues. So I think that this is a very important idea and concept. And as you'll hear in the presentation, there have been several cities, as well as the Cities Association, Santa Clara County, that have already adopted this resolution. And so we, as staff, would recommend adoption of the resolution. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ian Griffiths from the Seamless Bay Area for a quick presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Ian Griffiths, Policy Director with Seamless Bay Area. And our organization, we are a nonprofit organization. Our mission is to transform the Bay Area's fragmented and inconvenient public transit into a world-class, unified, equitable, and widely-used system by building a diverse movement for change and promoting the policy reforms that can help us build that seamless transit system. And the resolution before you today is to adopt a resolution supporting the seamless transit principles, which is a public-facing set of seven principles. I'll read through them just very briefly. One, run all Bay Area transit as one easy-to-use system. Two, put riders first. Three, make public transit equitable and accessible to all. Four, align transit prices to be simple, fair, and affordable. Five, connect effortlessly with other sustainable transportation. Six, plan communities and transportation together. And seven, prioritize reforms to create a seamless network. This is not, in practice, how we are operating our regional transportation system today. And it's important to have, we're trying to build a coalition of groups and cities to really express the importance of adopting this policy framework. Transit should be the backbone of our region, and most cities support an increasing amount of transit ridership. But yet, our investments in the past have not led to increasing transit use, and we've in fact seen declines in public transit performance over the past couple of decades, despite many counties and cities investing in service. So we're seeing increasing commute times, lowering bus speeds. We've been out talking to everyday people who use transit or who might want to use transit. What we find is there's, so many members of the public want to use public transit. They want to pick a more sustainable way of getting around, but they just, they find it's not a convenient system. It doesn't make sense for their life. It's too confusing. It's not reliable. They want a higher functioning system. We see the importance also of this resolution right now, is we have, we're having this regional conversation of a major new source of transportation funding. There are groups advocating to put a ballot measure to raise a large amount of money for transit, and we think that's absolutely essential. We're happy to see that polling suggests that the public really wants to see more investment in transit, and they support that type of investment when it's associated with words like seamless, reliable, fast, and affordable. That's what people want. But at the same time, there's limited trust in the capacity of our existing public agencies to deliver on that. And our two largest newspapers came out with editorials over the summer expressing, you know, yes, we need more funding for transit, but we need to have, we need to have reforms that ensure that we break from this fragmented approach that we've had in the past, and we truly create an integrated network. We have 27 transit agencies in the Bay Area, and it's really not working, it's not working for any part of the region. There's no region that's very well-served by our current system, which is, for many people, not logical. And there's no clear regional vision for the integration and the long-term planning of the network. Many of the transit agencies are struggling with some of the same issues, and we're spending billions on our transit investments that have not increased transit ridership over time. This is only getting more and more urgent, as we have a rapid technological change that are bringing new forms of mobility and could help us face more challenges. And we know this comes to a head more than anywhere in Millbrae. You experience it firsthand with so many transit agencies coming together, needing to deal with the frustrations of someone just missing their train, and the schedules not being coordinated, or we're dealing with the longer-range planning issues around having so many different transit agencies not necessarily communicating with each other on long-term planning projects. So to be clear, what we're trying to achieve with this resolution and as an organization of where we want, what we think the Bay Area should be orienting itself towards, is a seamless, customer-focused, regional network, where the rapid transit network is strategically planned at a regional level to actually work as a system, where transit agencies work together to operate different parts of an integrated network, where service quality, fare, schedules, and wayfinding and other components of the customer experience are standardized to be as reliable and as seamless as possible for the end user, and where our transit and high-capacity vehicles move quickly on all of our regional roads. And there are a lot of, you know, Bay Area is a complicated place. It's a diverse region. But there are other similarly complicated regions that have, that have found ways to create a more seamless system. So we like to use the example of Frankfurt and the Greater Frankfurt area in Germany. This is another polycentric region with lots of different employment centers, urban, suburban, rural areas, 160 different transit operators, 408 municipalities. So even more fragmented in many ways than the Bay Area, but they've, they introduced a coordinated governance framework, a transit alliance of all those different transit operators to be able to coordinate the service in the early 90s. And since that point, they've seen a 60% growth in transit ridership and a much more coordinated approach towards long-range planning. During that same period of time, we've only had 16% growth in transit ridership in the Bay Area. So that's the scale of the potential change that we believe is possible in the Bay Area if we address some of the core issues that result in our fragmented approach to transit. So moving back to the resolution itself and the seamless transit principles, change is hard, and we need to be able, we're trying to build that public support and the support from places all across the Bay Area to show that we're ready to take on this important challenge. We've had 1,350 members of the public sign on to a petition in support of these seamless transit principles, and 17 organizations publicly support. And as the city manager mentioned, the Cities Association of Santa Clara County is the most recent group of cities representing 15 cities in Santa Clara County. And the city of Berkeley passed a resolution late last year. We have other resolutions in progress with the city of San Francisco that we expect in the next couple of months. Burlingame, Sunnyvale are some of the others that we're hoping we'll have soon. So the resolution just is to affirm commitment, to work collaboratively with all of the different players in the Bay Area towards a more seamless transit system, and to support the seamless principles and have the city listed as a supporter publicly on the website. Happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Peppin?
Amen. I'm so glad you're here. We have needed this for a very long time, until your organization has put this together. It's been just an ongoing battle. Have any transit agencies actually signed on to this?
No, but we are working, Bart and Marin Transit are the two that we have been working with board members to try to make that happen in the next couple of months as well.
Good luck with that. Has this been presented to CCAG or MTC? I don't think so. You presented to MTC, but there was no...
We have had staff meetings. We've had, we've never presented at MTC, but we've had several meetings with different MTC staff, and we've not yet met with anyone at CCAG.
The problem that we have dealt with throughout Millbrae, and we're very excited to have this here, is that we talk to transit agencies all the time, and none of them ever resolve issues. They just say, we met. The only thing we've been able to do is actually get Bart to the airport once again, and that was like pulling teeth just to make that happen. But thankfully, the airport stepped up. So I'm very excited to see you here, what we are missing, and I hope we can approach this at the state level, legislatively speaking, because this type of measure doesn't cost taxpayers anything. The transit agencies need to be made accountable as to the schedules and all these principles that you have. I think and I hope we can work with our legislators to make them accountable to this, but I'm so glad this is being presented to the city of Millbrae, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Couple of quick questions. On the wherethes, the third whereas talks about the reduction in per capita trips by bus, but in Millbrae, at least, we have a number of private corporate shuttle buses. Does that take into account the switch between public to private? Just in terms of accuracy? Or the fact that we deal with private shuttle traffic?
I believe I would have to go check on that data source. I'm not positive whether the mode share includes private shuttles as an option or not, but I can get that.
And just so that you understand, for these private shuttles to be able to get their employees in and out of the BART station or train station, we had to design our TOD around that. And the disconnect was, they want to pick up as close to the escalator at BART, for example, which means they don't go past the new retail, which means, again, we don't make a penny in sales tax. Well, that's what I remember from meetings, so that's what I'm going to hold in mind. So that's my interpretation of where we had to put bike, bus shuttles on things, rather than moving them out where they had to walk a tenth of a mile. Okay. Transit Alliance, oh, I serve on the county BPAC. Is any of this going to look in at bicycle corridors that feed into transit?
So one of the principles is connect effortlessly with other sustainable transportation. So we do support excellent pedestrian and bicycle connections. We think that needs to be part of how we, you know, the accountability regionally of ensuring that we both invest in those modes as part of an integrated transportation plan, and that we, especially for routes of regional significance, you know, oversee them at that level.
So the reason I bring that up is, each city probably has its own set of wayfaring signs. I was at the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition Summit in Mountain View this summer, and Mountain View has just recently put in new bicycle-specific road signs, which are really cool. You can see them from the level that you're on at a bicycle. They tell you how far you are before you can connect with, say, the California Street Station in Palo Alto, et cetera. And when I came back to our county and talked about signage, and we've talked about it before, there's no consistency in bike signage throughout the Bay Area. So that would be a great area where there is some consistency, and that means as you're riding along, you can always kind of anticipate where you might need to see that signage. So that would be an advantage to that. I'm all for this. I absolutely am so angry, as some of your co, because they talked to me last night, at the control that transit agencies have over Millbrae. The absolute encalcitants of Caltrain so that we can realign a street and finish a project is absolutely unacceptable, and the same with high-speed rail. And I was probably the biggest high-speed rail supporter of this council, and now not so much. So I am hesitant on giving yet one more body having control over us. Managed lanes going in on 101 may or may not take away more trees, which are the one thing to protect us from the noise from the airport. Millbrae has been the brunt of helping everybody else at the cost of our own residents, and I'm tired of it. But I support the resolution. The concept is good, but I'm scared to death with one more entity saying, Millbrae, this is what you have to do.
Councilman Lee?
Thank you for your efforts. I'm pretty, you know, it's a really admirable goal. My dream is, yeah, to be seamless, but I really think that 27 transit districts... My dream is, yeah, to be seamless, but I really think that 27 transit districts in one region just doesn't make sense to me, because you go around other countries, around the world, you have just one transit, regional transit agency. And I understand the people want to protect their fiefdoms and that sort of thing, so I give you many prayers and hopefulness. Have you guys ever done a study on how much each agency costs to run administratively? Suggestions in how they can become more financially stable? Or, because it seems to me like we could save billions of dollars in a loan and effectively make our services more effective if we would consolidate some transit agencies, which companies do all the time in order to become more efficient and save money.
So, our organization has not done a study. MTC did some work on that 10 or so years ago as part of a project called the Transit Sustainability Project. And they found some opportunities for cost savings, others where maybe, you know, there weren't as many benefits as they thought. We are positioning this initiative, I mean, this set of transit, the principles are really focused on creating the seamless customer experience for riders and having that be the driving policy objective. We hope that there would be efficiencies in doing that, but we're not prescribing a particular solution, or we're not prescribing even the question of whether that would involve agency mergers or not, or more the sort of German model that I was referring to before, which is more of an alliance model. So, it's really focused on the customer.
Councilman Oliva?
So, I like the alliance model. I think that's the approach. Otherwise, there's too many organizations that want to be in charge, too many chiefs, not enough Indians here. So, and I love the idea. Thank you very much. I was, I wanted to question a little bit about, what's the business plan, the business approach on your end to, I mean, obviously, you came to our council meeting, and you have 17 other organizations that are on board that have signed up to let you do your work, and whether or not anybody signs up to this, you're going to continue, I hope, to do the work? But what's the approach of how are you going to get everybody to go on board, and then what?
Great, yeah. Well, we're working on a number of different strategies. One is working directly with transit agencies and agencies like MTC to advance initiatives that can make a real difference in this. So, one of those things that we're currently working on is advocacy to support integrated fares, so a common fare system for the Bay Area. And our advocacy was part of making sure that that moved forward, and is that the council is taking, or that MTC is moving that forward this year. We're also working, we're trying to, we're working with state legislators on possible state legislation that would be in association with a major regional funding measure to make sure that we accompany new funding with the appropriate policies that can support a seamless transit system. So, having a wide range of cities as well as other public agencies to show our state legislators that this is an important policy priority for the people of different parts of the region, that's an important part of our advocacy strategy.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
So, the policy part, I understand, so are you saying the solution is money?
We, there needs to, to create the seamless vision that I was referring to, we're going to need money, but we're also going to need reforms.
That's what I'm asking. What is the money, what do you need the money for?
So, the funding that the region is discussing raising is through a ballot measure. That is not something that we are directly, you know, that is not our primary initiative. We're engaging in those conversations. We're focusing our efforts on identifying what are the reforms and the governance changes that should accompany new funding to ensure that we spend it effectively and to ensure that we actually build that seamless transit system with any new money that we identify, and that we're not just sort of, you know, throwing money at a system that's not really functioning and that's going to repeat the mistakes that it's made in the past.
Perfect. So, if I could be clear, your group, Seamless?
Yeah.
Would control the money that was, no?
No, sorry. So, we're a nonprofit, and we are working with legislators to advocate for legislation that would look at reforming existing public institutions. So, we're not, we have no, we are a nonprofit, we are not, our objective is, you know, policy reforms, not anything that we ourselves would benefit or profit from. And we are not asking, you know, we do, in terms of how we are funded, we have some funding from the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, individual donors, a wide number. So, we do fundraising that support our advocacy activities, but we're not asking any funding of the City of Millbrae, just the support for the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but you mentioned, you know, fare coordination, and I think one of the challenges is that each of these agencies are in such different, you know, fiscal shapes, where you have, you know, Bart and Caltrain are fairly efficient in terms of fare box recovery, 70, 80%. And I was reading, I think, the Smart Train up in the North Bay, they're only recovering maybe 10% of their costs through, maybe not quite that low, but a very low percentage of their costs through the fares. So, there would have to be some administrative changes and some questions about how exactly this whole type of system would be funded. And obviously, there's our geographic challenges as well, where, you know, the center of our region is a large body of water that makes it difficult for, it makes commute, everything farther apart and long commute times, and also the housing issue involved with that. But I think this is a great idea. I think there's a lot of work that can be done in this area. I traveled, you know, to Paris last year, and it was amazing just how integrated all of the, you know, the metro with the commuter rail, with the buses, with the light rail. And you can use the same ticket for each one, and it was very low-cost, very affordable, very reliable service. And you can easily transfer from one to the other without having to, you know, pay, buy another ticket. So, I think we have a lot of work to do and a lot of common sense solutions that can be implemented here so that we don't have people, you know, missing connections all the time, which I see almost every day at Millbrae, you know, where the Bart arrives and people get off and they run over, or the Caltrain arrives, they run over to Bart, and the doors close right before they can get in, or they have to run all the way up the stairs and then all the way down on the other side and miss the connections. So, we have a lot of work to do, and I applaud you and your organization for trying to address these challenges.
We do have a couple of speaker slips on this issue. So, the first speaker we have is Nathan Chan.
I just want to thank the city council for, again, for giving me the opportunity to speak before you. I just want to tell my own personal story about how a seamless transit system can work delightfully. So, I work in Emeryville. I would have probably had to drive if there weren't a seamless connection available for me, but thanks to the fact that the Emery Go-Round Shuttle within Emeryville pretty much lines up with when the Bart train arrives at MacArthur, I rarely have to wait more than three to five minutes for the shuttle to leave, and then I can get to work. And I feel I can get to work in a reasonable, bearable amount of time, and that makes riding transit not just a viable alternative, but a superior alternative for me. So, I really think that the council should full-throatedly support the resolution before them. I heard a couple of council members express some concerns about the power imbalance between the cities and the transit agencies. I actually think that this is a perfect vehicle for forcing more accountability upon the transit agencies. The San Mateo Grand Jury last year reprimanded Samtrans for not coordinating their schedules more closely with Caltrain. So, if there was the Grand Jury Report, and then Seamless, and then all of these cities and transit rider unions, like associations of transit riders, all standing up and saying, "You need to really shape up. You all need to take the existing infrastructure and use it more efficiently." I think that sends a very strong message to these transit agencies that we want them to do better, and I think that is empowering for us. It's not about surrendering more control to them. That is pretty much all I think I wanted to say. I remember, maybe just one more thing. I remember last year, I saw a presentation from another seamless organizer, and this is really like a transit rider grassroots effort. It's not being, as far as I can tell, it's not being coordinated by MTC or any of the big professional associations. This is very much about transit riders and transit advocates wanting the transit agencies to provide a better experience that we all know that they're capable of. They just need to pony up and start doing it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. The next speaker is Jeff Carter.
Go Niners.
Go Niners, go Stanford. Thank you. Jeff Carter, Lebanon, Millbrae here. The airport's in my, literally in my backyard, but I have been using the train from Millbrae to San Francisco since 1977. You know, the old, original station, and now the new, what I call Monstrosity, Millbrae Station, because it is difficult at Millbrae. I take the train first thing in the morning. The train, Bart leaves at 5:34, and the Caltrain leaves, pulls in at 5:36. So, there's no coordination, and I've seen, you know, there's a couple of people that do like to try to connect, and they try, but it's just difficult for them to try to connect between Caltrain and Bart. And then the opposite direction, you have to circumnavigate stairs, slow elevators to get from one system to the other. So, it's just very, very uncoordinated. Trying to get to the bus from Caltrain or Bart is extremely difficult because the bus is up on El Camino, and you have to, you know, it's, that's an adventure to try to get, you know, connect to the bus, you know, the ECR bus from either the Caltrain or the Bart, because the bus does not pull right into the station. It used to pull into that turnaround, but that was also difficult because the bus had to go through traffic lights and et cetera. And, you know, it was just so, it's just terrible compared to, you know, someplace in Europe. The, lost my train of thought, I'm very tired. But anyway, this is, you know, it's, I fully support this. I appreciate the Seamless Bay Area working on this. You know, coordination is needed. You know, fares need to be coordinated. Clipper was created as a vehicle to start coordinating fares, but it really hasn't happened. Now, they're talking about Clipper 2.0, and there's resistance from transit agencies to coordinate fares, because there's been discussions at Caltrain Advisory Committee meeting on Clipper 2.0, and, you know, somebody brought up, well, let's, you know, what about coordinating the fares? And they throw Brown Act at you right away. Well, it's not on the agenda, we can't discuss it. But Clipper 2.0 is about coordinating fares. And then the other answer is, well, the fare would have to be so high that nobody would use it, because the transit agencies are afraid of losing revenue. So, you know, they're all about their fiefdoms, and, you know, they want to be in charge, but we need to see coordination, you know, under one umbrella so that it makes a system much easier to use for the user, the rider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Yes, Councilman Pappin?
And just as a follow-up, I will be pushing these elements. MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, has a retreat this month, and I'm hoping they will focus on all of these things. They did pass legislature, a resolution for fare integration after many, many years. So, that study is going on presently to do away with the fiefdoms. As the last speaker said, that we have to have these aspects within transportation to make it seamless, and all the issues that Councilmember Lee and I brought up with the current general manager at Bart. The stations are unsafe, they're dirty, they've created a public health hazard, as is the lack of law enforcement at the stations. I will say, and I'm going to report out, that I voted against giving Bart another $35 million, one of which of the elements was for more police officers, but they would not be in our region. So, this money was being recycled because, as you said, the agency from the South was non-performing. I thought the money should be given more to Caltrain than Bart, which has been completely non-responsive. So, unless we make them accountable, we need to start pulling the purse strings back. And the element, I think Councilmember Oliva was mentioning, there is a measure they call Faster Bay Area, which is the tax that they want to impose. The aspects of Seamless Bay Area here, I think, are really important, and I don't see the public being willing to support the Faster aspect unless Seamless' performance measures and accountability are imposed on these agencies now. So, I applaud the council and our representative here for presenting this aspect, and I hope we will all support this. Thank you.
And don't want to get off topic here, but there's another question about Faster, of whether it should be yet another sales tax, of which there have been many.
I think it's going to pass. They tried.
As opposed to a different type of revenue measure.
Is this the one they're talking about for November 2020?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
It would have to have state legislature approval to put it on the ballot. Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Pappin, a second by Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
Item 14 passed unanimously.
Okay, so going back now to item 12, the council discussion and appointments to subcommittees for 2020, the recommended subcommittees are in the folder here. If you have another moment to look it over, feel free to, not on the fold-out sheet, but in the single sheet.
There is no Graham Boulevard anymore. So, it's...
Nobody mentioned that in the emails that I sent out.
Because I mentioned it to, I'm sorry, I didn't even see it, because I mentioned it three or four months ago when they disbanded the public representative part of that. It's gone.
Yeah, Councilmember did mention that to us, and that's an oversight on our part.
I think, I think, yeah.
Apologize for that.
Correct.
I do have one quick comment.
Oh, yes. Come for me?
So, we're not, you're talking about disbanding some of the subcommittees?
So, yeah, I mean, there's a couple of different things. The actual item on the agenda is the, oh, disbanding the subcommittees, yes. So, there were, I think, five subcommittees that I would recommend disbanding, just that have been inactive recently. And there's also, you know, the Community Garden, which has completed its work. The Cannabis Subcommittee, I was on two years, I did not meet a single time.
They're painting on the wall.
I believe the Military Unit Subcommittee was created for the parade and the event that occurred two years ago, but as far as I know, there are no other, nothing else planned in, within the city or within San Mateo County.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that. We're still adopting this, we are, we're not going to, we're not going to remove the Dobson unit, and I am the contact four.
Okay. And, you know, if there are any events or anything that you feel that, you know, the City of Millbrae should be involved, please let us know, and either through a subcommittee or through...
No, no, we're not, we're disbanding that subcommittee, right.
You could always make a new subcommittee if we need to.
Just a question on that one. So, I'm an advisor to the Millbrae Lions Youth Club, the Leos. The Leos decided that they would send gifts to our unit. I went out and bought the chocolate for the Leos, an Hanukkah gift, and they made homemade cards, and the box is still sitting in my house because we can't find the unit. So, and it turns out that a lot, the Colonel had moved on to a different thing. So, I agree with getting rid of the unit, but I think we have a little bit of work...
No, no, no.
The subcommittee, but, and the data on our website is wrong. I just would love to see us, maybe Councilman Lee, you and I can sit down and we can do a little tweaking and get it up to speed, and then our residents can participate in the process.
Yeah, I think the other...
Yeah, I think the other thing, too, is that our, our city manager, Tom Williams, is a veteran, and we want to do something for our veterans, too. So we can do something, you know, on the same vein.
Okay. So as for the Subcommittee recommendations, are there any comments, or any requests, or suggestions? Councilwoman Pappin?
I don't know how Councilmember Schneider feels, but the Bike/Scooter Committee, I think we were so close. I would like to see that continue.
I would love to see it continue, too. The question is, do we do it at our level, or does it go under the new Millbrae Very Active Bike Pedestrian Committee? I don't, I don't know. How would you like it, Councilwoman?
Well, I think we were talking about getting into a contract with a specific provider.
We did. We were ready to sign the next day.
So I think that has to be stopped providing bike shares.
Yeah. So I think that has to be more of a city Subcommittee that can bring a contract to the council. And if the city manager could let us know, I mean, there are other providers out there.
Can I throw something else in? I sent an article, I think, to the BPAC, the Millbrae BPAC. They now have electric Vespas, given that the mayor was in Italy, it was in France. When you're in Italy, you're in Vespa country, and I rode one when I was a youngster, in Milan, which is incredibly congested. You see Vespas all over the place. So it was just recently, they're testing electric Vesta, renting electric Vespas in Oakland. So it's the first place on the West Coast. There's some exciting new things that give.
That offered in San Francisco.
I'd have to put, well, this was specifically testing in Oakland on there, and, and it gives you enough room to put packages, so you could, in theory, use it to get groceries and get home, you know. So I'd love to continue doing on this, if you're open to keeping the committee.
The two of you would like to continue on that?
Please.
Is that okay?
And if I could note, too, the ride-share companies like Uber and Lyft, who we're not fans of here, I know, but they are also in the bike and scooter biz. So you can actually get an app. So I think we have new alternatives to evaluate, and I appreciate the council's willingness to do so.
Yeah, scooters and electric bikes and all of that.
And Mayor, just, just point of clarification. It was my understanding at our council meeting, where we created the Infrastructure Subcommittee, that it's infrastructure and climate change?
Yes.
Okay. So if we could just get climate change in there, I would be very happy.
Okay, we can do that.
I'm very happy.
We didn't put it in, because it's just a subset of, of infrastructure.
I can go back and look at the, the actual agenda item.
Or look at the tape.
But I believe that would be, you know, climate resiliency, I believe, is, would be under the.
It all falls under there, so you don't have to, it's a bigger, it's more, because climate change affects many departments, too, but all, in infrastructure.
I think the reason why it's great to have it standalone, is we are going to have that Climate Action Plan coming to us one of these days, and we know that our young people are dropping off and volunteering for certain activities, but they're very interested in doing climate change-related activities. So let's start pulling in our young folk.
And then, as for the other committee assignments, if somebody really didn't get something that you really wanted, and would like to do some horse trading, or requests, you know, you know, feel free to ask the person who is listed as the, as the delegate for, or liaison, and we can make accommodations. Yes, Ms. Mayor?
This has to do with Peninsula Clean Energy. So Wayne has been the person since the get-go, and I've been the alternate. I have the problem that the County Bicycle Pedestrian Committee meets the same time. Now, we only meet about eight times a year. The one critical meeting is October, when we vote on giving out grants. So because of schedules, and I don't, can't speak for Councilman Lee, but I think both of us had an incredibly busy 2019. So we've missed a few meetings. And there was a discussion at the retreat on Saturday about the governance of it, and it was recognized that they like that every city is there, and they want every city there. This is my long way of getting to, some of the cities have their city manager as another designee that can go, because you have to go through, I can't remember, Wayne, it's been four years, a background check, or there's, there's a couple of other, other layers for being in this quasi-governmental unit. I don't know if, if our, our city manager is interested, but Brisbane sends their city manager, South San Francisco sends their city manager, if their council members can't attend.
Yeah, we brought this up, Wayne, beginning, and the council, that, that time, the council decided they wanted just council members.
Well, no, I think this could be a third, if we wanted it.
No, no, I'm, I'm open to it. I think that there are times when I can't, and you can't, and if the, and no, and other council members can't go, then we can ask city staff to send somebody.
It's just, in this case, this is like C-KAG. If you haven't gotten prior approval and had something waved over your head, you don't get to sit at the table. You actually have to go through the background.
No, there's not, there's nothing like that I'm aware of, but I know that the council is, is the governing board, the city councils decide who they want to send as their representatives. That was the only, that was the only.
There can be like, somebody as a one-time alternate.
I don't think so, because you go through these additional checks, and you have to do a Form 700. You've got to have these things in place. So I think we should just think about maybe having a, an additional backup for it.
I, I, I agree with that, and I think normally what we do is we just, if the alternate doesn't work out, we ask another council member to go. In this case, I think if the council's okay with sending staff, then that's what we can do. But I think we did agree that we would keep it to the council.
Let's, let's maybe keep it to the council for now, and if we've noticed we've had multiple absences. Three in a row last year.
And I apologize, I'm just, out of country or BPAC.
And the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group was the same time as well.
That's a good point, because I've talked to Supervisor Horsley. There's been talk in the PAC for the County BPAC. I was trying to find a different night, because there are two other, there are two meetings that everybody, that everybody comes late to BPAC and has difficulty getting a forum, difficulty getting a forum. And sometimes we don't do anything, sometimes we don't do, and then there's the one meeting, and then there's the one meeting. I mean, we don't do anything, we get, you know, we're educated, you know, we get educated. But I will try my best, I will try my best, because I like being on it, because I like being on it, but it's complicated.
So I'd love to commit, just in fact, it just so happens tomorrow, I have a funeral since I have all four of you here, and we need some coverage for the Senior Advisory Committee. Let somebody skip up. Senior Advisory Committee tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m.
Senior Advisory.
Senior Advisory Committee at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah, and we don't have, I think, I don't think there were any issues last year with not having alternates for committee liaisons. That was a change from previous years, but I think it worked out well. And if you are to be absent, miss one of these meetings, and would like coverage, please contact the city manager, or the city clerk, or myself, and we can arrange for an alternate to attend. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Lee to accept the Subcommittee recommendations, including the continuation of the Bike Share Subcommittee, and a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. Your votes, please.
Item number 12 passed unanimously.
Okay, item 13 is an informational report on Broadway Tree Planting Project. I know this had been, I believe, continued from a previous meeting, and it's, it's only an informational report, so maybe if we can keep it very brief here, since it's, it's getting late.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will keep it very brief of this assignment. This is an item continuing from, from the November 2019 council meeting, since we ran out of time that night. So, Key Lee, Police Director, so tonight, I'm going to be standing in front of you, talking about some of the great work we have done on Broadway, especially in the 400 block of Broadway, by Dean Produce, between Taylor and Hillcrest. So as you see on this picture, there are three beautiful trees on that block, and why do we go and remove those trees? And those are the answers most of you like to know. And we're going to tell you why. Some of the trees, a couple of those trees actually have caused quite a lot of damage to the sidewalk. They pose a tripping hazard to, to our shoppers downtown, to people that walk along the sidewalk on downtown. And recently, late last year, we actually have two incidents. The tree actually split in the middle. The tree was diseased, and it was rotten, and it fell on vehicles that parked near the trees. And like I mentioned, there were two incidents within a month or so. So we decided, because of that, the trees are in such an unhealthy state, we decided to come up with a planting scheme to replace those trees. And this is what we have done. This is just a comparison picture. There were three big trees on the top pictures, and then one we clear-cut out, the trees on that same block. You will see how clear that is, and it wasn't looking too attractive. So we came up with a design scheme. We actually borrowed some idea back in 2016, under the leadership of then-mayor's Annie Oliva. We had a downtown pilot demo project, where we improved the intersections of Broadway and Hillcrest. And we got a lot of great feedback from the both residents and businesses about those improvements a few years ago. So those trees that we replanted on Broadway, those are called tristineus. And instead of replacing three, we actually replanted five trees. And you could, as you could see from the enjoying pictures here, we actually put some thought into the replanning scheme. We're using the same tree grates we had at the intersection at Hillcrest and Broadway, and also the way how we align those planting. We try not to obstruct the front door to other businesses, blocking their businesses. We place those trees in between two businesses. And for future planting purposes along Broadway, we'll continue with the, with the same scheme. We'll use the same species, using the same tree grate. And at the same time, just walking across the street, right adjacent to Zand sushi place, there was a city parking lot, and we had two fairly large trees that had caused quite a lot of damage to pavement, and also water infrastructure in the area. And we also decided to remove these two big trees. As you could see, they have caused quite a bit of pavement damage there. And this is the finished product. We replace, we removed two trees, and we replaced with seven tristine trees along the planting strips, adjacent to the parking lot. And with that, that concludes my report, and I'd like to, I'd love to answer any question you may have.
Councilwoman Pappin?
Yes, please. The two trees in the city parking lot that caused the extensive damage to the main water backflow, can we get some sort of foliage or landscaping in there instead? Those of us who are doing the citywide cleaning, the city manager, and Councilmember Lee and I noticed, because we were working the downtown area there, you get less trash if it is landscaped in such a way, with, of course, water-resistant plants. Otherwise, that's going to be just one big ashtray. So I would really like to see something there, some shrubbery, something nice. Otherwise, we're just adding nothing.
Definitely the reason why we have not been installing any ground cover, because we had a concrete pad that we recently pulled, and there will be some concrete damage that we have to replace. When we finish those concrete, we will, we're installing some ground covers there.
And some sort of, this, I don't know, this might be the time, something there. Is this an area for a bio swell or something? Is that, did I say it right?
I think you referred to Councilwoman Pappin, green infrastructure?
Well, no, I don't know, but the county was giving money to, like, Burlingame and stuff, you can see in their downtown area?
Yes, yes.
I mean, if we can get some free money for something like that area, but I just don't think we should be leaving that in the current condition that shows in that picture.
Sure, definitely. This is, like I said, this is an unfinished product because of the recent concrete work, and it will be, it will be some pretty attractive ground cover there, once we are finished.
Your definition of attractive and mine might vary, but hopefully, something good.
Is that going to be similar to what we did in front of City Hall?
I do not think so. It will be some sort of a very least maintenance type of ground covers, that would actually, you know, prevent people from trashing the area. And then about the cigarette butts issue, there's some other issue that we're working concurrently on how to address that issue as well.
So we've had success, right? And we had success with the tree planting program, and we have success on the Frontage Road, on El Camino, on ground cover, and also on Broadway, just south of Meadow Glen. And so, working with Key and his staff, we're going to just take that and, and start to repeat it, where we've been successful. So the street trees and grates, some of the ground cover, I think that Councilmember Pappin is referring to, we know it works, we know it thrives, and that's the theme and pattern that we're going to continue with. And that's kind of what our message was this evening, that we're going to continue with, with what has worked in pilot programs, and that will be our central landscaping theme for downtown.
Is it, by any chance, I'm going to assume that it is drought tolerant. Do we know if any of it's California native? And do we know if any of it will support pollinators?
I would think that we would like to meet all the requirements. They may not be native, but they will be climate appropriate for the area there.
Okay.
And then, before I go tonight, I do have a question. If you can see on the pictures, on the left-hand side, there's a bulletin board. We, staff recently have sort of gathered around the area, looking at the bulletin board, and it does need some TLC, but we don't know who actually installed that. I think it has some history behind it.
It's the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, we'll deal with them with that.
I heard that the Quigs are the ones who actually updated, Dan and Kathy Quig.
I was afraid to touch it.
Item sometime in our past, and I.
That's what I heard, is they're the ones that put up stuff there.
I will start with the Chamber, and thank you very much.
Okay. All right. And that was an informational item, so no vote needed. Next, we have item 15, Adopt a Resolution Approving the Submitter of an Application for the Regional Trails Program. Should we take 15 and 16 together?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's begin with 15, but take them together.
Are you doing this one first?
No, I'll do the other one first.
What are you even doing?
Control.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I will be as quick as possible here, getting the point across. The, the first presentation here is regarding the Recreational Trails Program, and that is a, a federal grant that authorizes funds to the states. It started to help in, develop and maintain recreational trails for motorized and non-motorized purposes. So the funds come from the Federal Highway Trust, and it's $270 million per year, but California's portion of that is $5.7 million, and that is further divided down to about one and a half million for this specific grant program. And the max that you can apply for is.
Speak closer to the microphone, please.
Sorry. The, it is a 12% match, which can be with in-kind funds, so that is labor and services provided by, by staff. So the specific grant project would be for the Upper Spur Trail Development Area, and we're calling it that, but it's what you might have heard as being called Spur Trail Phase 3. So Lamita Avenue to the north, and then the area adjacent to Green Hills Golf Course, next to Banbury Avenue on the south. So if you've been over there, you've probably noticed that there's already a dirt trail there. So this would be significant improvement. Key, I believe, decomposed granite, a decomposed granite pathway, as well as trailhead improvements and signage. So hiking, there would be an out and back, nothing of a through-trail hike, or any sort of loop. As I said here, signage, grading, paving, and landscaping for the trailhead, as well as 2,400 linear feet of decomposed granite trail. You can see the imaging here. If you've been along Lamita Avenue, you can see that that is the trailhead. There are very small dirt paths up to the terminus there of the hill, and then it widens up to about a six-to-10-foot wide dirt path. And you can see the, the blue line is where it would cycle through. So the total project cost is $210,000. And so with a 12% match, that would be, and with in-kind, with services, that would be a grant application of $185,000. And so the, the match would be the $25,000, which is, has been specifically with, it's, it's in the budget, the parks' budget, for maintenance along the trails. But if we are improving the trails, we no longer have to do that maintenance. So that would be put towards the labor. So that would be put towards the labor for improving the trail. Any questions specifically about this grant? Yes.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
This is based on my experience of grading grants through the B-PAC, but also that I used to give grants for the City of San Jose. Did the, this entity give you a scoring criteria ahead of time?
There is a, there is a grant guide, yes.
The reason I bring that up is I understand the 25% and I would encourage strongly, if we can, to come up with some more in-kind. We've had community volunteer days, maybe we throw some of that in. Because when we're scoring the B-PAC grants, you get a certain number of points if you make the bare minimum. So in this case, 12% or 20% or 25. And, you know, given that Millbrae has lost more than we've gotten from the bicycle pedestrian grants, even with myself, former Councilwoman Cola Pietro and school principal Dana Luhon on it, sometimes you've got to be as competitive as you can. So if we can do that, I think that might help us.
Yes, I'll review with Key and we can see what the actual amount would be to...
We look at all the ones that are just the bare minimum and we say, golly, they really don't want it, do they? That's kind of what goes through your head.
We, we just noticed that we could make that match, so we will actually calculate the, the appropriate match.
Okay. Councilwoman Pappin?
How does this relate to that other project we were talking about, the, the one near the skate park?
That's the next...
Oh, sorry, excuse me, I got ahead. Good job on this, though. We like grant money, so thank you.
Any questions on this one? I think this is a great project, well overdue and would like to see this get done. Let's take it, let's take it all as, as one. However, does, it would terminate at Branbury Lane, what would be, Branbury?
Branbury, yes.
Branbury. What would be the, needed to actually complete the spur trail?
Beginning estimations and the reason that we did not add this into this project is because the, this total grant pot is about a million and a half. And so we, we didn't want to take up all of this grant pot.
It's over, over 10% of the grant pot for our, our small city here.
Exactly. I believe, and Key, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe going all the way over to Larkspur would be about a million dollars, just because of the significant grading that would have to take place and it's very dense brush as well. And then about another 500 to 750,000 going from Larkspur to Helen.
Okay. So, yeah, a lot of work to do, hope to keep that in our capital plan in some capacity, but great to see this get underway and hopefully we get this grant. Okay, let's move to the next one and we'll take them as one motion afterwards.
All right, this next one encompasses two different resolutions, applications for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. So just some background, the Land and Water Conservation Fund was established in 1963 and it is administered by the National Park Service at a federal level and those funds are allocated to the states from there. I do not know the exact amount, I could not find it exactly. It seems like there are funds that are allocated and then California is able to, to grant a little bit more. So in the range of probably 14 to 16 million would be allocated to California. And then once the, the project is completed and the funds are allocated, this, this land within the boundary area of the map becomes federally protected into perpetuity. So you might remember, I believe back in 2000 or 2002, the skate park was funded with a grant that is federally protects the skate park and also Central Park, I believe, was as well. So the first project is, and, and the title might throw you off it, but naming it this specifically for the purposes of the grant project. But the Western Central Park Outdoor Space Project, which simply means the Recreation Center Outdoor Space, which is a project that has already been approved. So this would be utilizing the funds that we already have from insurance, specifically from insurance to, to try to maximize, to get more funding. And so the, the Recreation Center Paseo, the community room patio, the fitness patio, parking lots, lighting, bioretention soil, landscaping and hardscaping amounted to the range of about three and a half million dollars. And so, and as well as tennis court resurfacing, which was already an approved project before the fire, but it amounts to three and a half million dollars. So that ask, since it is a 50% match, would be 1.75 million for this project, but it is no fiscal impact because these are funds that are already allocated. And I'll move forward on that and then I'll come back to the other products. So you can see right here, this is the site plan that Group Four has put together. So it includes everything as well as the, the tennis course space that is not, not highlighted there. So all of the highlighted area would be within this project. And moving back here to the Millbrae Skate Park renovation and fitness court project. So as I mentioned before, the skate park is already federally protected. And so if we were to just take the skate park as a standalone project, we would not receive any points for the acreage to be federally protected. So adding on another portion of land would allow this to be federally protected. And I will have to include an application, within this application requesting that a smaller space is, that the boundary map is made smaller. Otherwise, I will want to include the entirety of the spur trail section there between Millbrae Avenue and Ashton. So I will request a smaller space and I believe that it would be hopefully approved since they have done that before with the skate park specifically. So the project already, the project would include the already approved fitness court and some good news with the fitness court. As you know, from presenting before, we received $30,000 from the National Fitness Campaign for that fitness court. So that would be used towards this match. We also recently received $50,000 from the Peninsula Healthcare District for this fitness court and also just received $5,000 from the Lions Club. So for the portion of the fitness court, we need to continue to raise about $46,000 more for that. But putting it with the skate park renovation would allow it to, the fitness court funds to be used towards the match with the skate park and they would be helping each other out, both of these projects. And then the rest of the, the funding, the 50% match would come from Prop 68 per capita funds. And the more that we fund towards the fitness court, the less that would be used from the Prop 68 per capita funds.
Good job.
And, and just another heads up with the skate park user group that has recently been formed, the skate park has, it was in need of dire repair before, but it's been really being, been taken care of lately. And we have noticed and gotten a lot of feedback from the skate park users that they would like to see improvements done. There were some dilapidated wooden ramps and so this renovation would take care to put in concrete ramps that would last longer. And you can see here, the, the skate park, that is a rendition of, an updated renovated skate park with the square next to it would be where the fitness court would go. So directly adjacent, so having access to bathrooms and water. So the Recreation Center Outdoor Space Project, as I mentioned before, is $3.5 million with 1.75 million as this grant application with the 50% match being funded by the insurance. And then the skate park renovation and fitness court project would be in the range of 470,000 with a match, a grant request of 235,000.
Okay. Thank you. Any, is that complete?
Yes, that completes, completes that. And just as a reminder, with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, these areas would be protected into perpetuity. And the only way to change the nature of the use of this land would be to put in an application requesting that.
Just to follow up on that, I remember when this had come up before at the Parks and Rec Commission, the fitness court, there was the idea that possibly it could be moved because it's all on foam pads. But if this were, grant were approved, that could not be the case or the land would be federally...
The land would be federally protected as well as the equipment and the land use could not be changed outside of outdoor recreation purposes.
Okay, so we would...
I would have to look further into that.
Okay, well, that's, that's a minor thing and it's...
I think there is a mechanism, though, as, as McKenzie stated, if we were to move it, that we could write a letter and apply and get the approval for relocating. So there, there is a mechanism in a...
And I imagine that if you move the equipment, now that equipment is federally protected in a new location, but also the land where it originally was would, would continue to be protected for outdoor recreation purposes.
Fair enough. Vice Mayor Schneider?
I'm sorry, I, now I remember what I should have told both of you. Just for the record, I have clearance from the Secretary of State, from the Fair Political Practices C, to talk about and vote on things at the park. So since one of these grants is the West Central Park, I still have the ability to vote on it because I live within 500 feet of the very corner of the park on Palm Avenue. So just make sure that's in the record. And with the skateboard renovation, would that include artwork?
That would be an additional.
Okay.
Additional activity by cultural arts.
Okay.
No, they want to work with the skateboard committee. And I've taken some great photos of skate parks when I was traveling this year. There's some really fun stuff happening.
That, that renovation would specifically just be the installation of the cement ramps and I believe smoothing out and grading some of the, the metal facade within, within the skateboard.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilwoman Pappin?
Can we be clear for the record here? This proposal, these matching funds, everything, we are not spending money taking away from the community center?
Correct, yes.
Okay, point one. Point two, the rumor mill is already a muck about this fitness court project. So can the city please release some accurate information as to what we are trying to achieve here and what will this entail? So we do not hear from the community, oh, they're just, you know, spending money every which way and this is actually a good investment, I think.
Rumors from people who aren't here right now to talk about it.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I've, I've heard from some parents, what is this? And people are already speculating in the wrong way. I think this is a nice project and if we can get that out to the public, it will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And again, this, these projects will be 100% grant funded, but using the money that we already have for a match, yes. And, and there is no, we are not jeopardizing. As a matter of fact, I'd say we're enhancing the payment capacity of the Recreation Center because if we receive this one grant, then that actually saves more money for FFE and other things.
Many of those improvements are included in the existing budget that we're working with, right?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Pappin and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
Items number 15 and 16 passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will go to council comments and it is getting late and we've been on break for a while, so if we can keep these very brief, that would be appreciated. Let's start with Councilwoman Pappin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, please, there is a blood drive demand right now. They are in dire need of contributions. Please take the time. The blood bank has moved, so no longer in Millbrae there. I believe it's in San Mateo. What I looked up, 48th, 48th Second Avenue, San Mateo. We are approaching and you will all hear more likely, and I'm sure we'll have more on the census. So I hope we get more briefings and work with all community-based organizations to promote the census because everybody needs to be counted and the information is strictly confidential. We don't want misinformation out there. If you have any questions, I hope we can develop a hotline where we can accurately answer those questions. The census is very important. I've, trying to follow up with the city as to striping on Magnolia and Murchison. The street is pretty wide there and evidently it gets pretty crowded in the mornings because people can't decide whether it's two lanes heading to the east, to the west, excuse me. So I'm hoping that will be resolved soon. I explained earlier why, as your representative on NTC, I voted no to giving BART an additional $35 million. And hopefully we'll get a memo out on that one. The Millbrae Education Foundation Gala is coming up, February 29th, that's leap year. So we hope everybody will work to support that. And I tried out the Quick Quack, Quick Quack Car Wash, which was very good, I've got to say. For a while there, they were giving free car washes and I think they're still running a special 9.99. You can actually pay $39 and I think go as often as you'd like for a month. So that's kind of how they operate. I recommend people try that out. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Sure. Just to update, Council, Key Lim, John Gianoli, myself and the Chair of Community Enhancement walked the BART parking lot last week looking at trees that could potentially be reused and relocated. There are some very healthy Magnolias that could be, as we talked to our Parks Department along the Monterey Park on that, there are some, I always get the sycamore, it's got a specific species name, but sycamores and another tree species. And then there are quite a few palm trees which we, that Parks felt that we don't really have a place for, for the palm trees. Now, it is unclear if, who actually owns those trees, if BART owns them or if the developer owns them. I've several times talked to the developer about tree reuse where they're somewhat ambivalent. We didn't get this into the developer agreement. So this is going to be a after-the-fact negotiation to try to recover the trees and that is a project kind of going on right now. In addition, Public Works and Key have brought on a tree evaluator. They looked at the trees on the backside of the BART parking garage. And I know that the neighborhood, Bayside Banner, is very attached to those trees. Some of them are dead, some of them are dying and will be removed, but hopefully the redwood trees and things that give you a greenscape along there instead of looking at cement will remain. But just so that that neighborhood knows that Parks, or Public Works has been working on that. I've talked enough about Peninsula Clean Energy, other than City of Millbrae, we need to be right there for the resiliency funding. And that probably has to do with maintaining centers. If the power goes off, how do we keep our, our seniors and our people on medical devices safe during that time? The Millbrae Culture Arts Advisory Committee met yesterday. They have their new member. And I know we've got McKenzie in the audience, but they have already come up with a new schedule that's very exciting on Beats and Brews. I don't know if you need our permission, but Beats and Brews is going to be moving from the third Thursday to the first Thursday. I would like to think it's so that Councilwoman Pappin can attend because of CCAG, but they told me it's really so that staff can better manage their time with the movie night being on the third night. But I still think it's for CCAG because that was, that was horrible that you didn't get to attend any of them because they were really fun. And they've got this whole new music program, which they should report on. It's alternative right now, but there are a couple of new, different varieties of music. And for everybody on next door, something designed for Oktoberfest. So really great excitement on that and I thank you to McKenzie, who came and spoke to the Cultural Arts Committee on that. Roses. What, we didn't know, but we are getting closer. Someday we will be breaking ground on the Recreation Center. But there was a rose garden that was built by the senior center doorway to the old rec center. And it turns out that our very own John Gianoli has a friend who runs a nursery and way back then, they made a great deal to bring these roses in with the intent that the seniors would be able to learn how to prune roses on there. Well, those, there are still 25 of them alive. They've survived basically three years of being neglected. Chair of the Community Enhancement Committee, Parks let she and I in there last Friday. We pruned them all to get ready for moving them. Roses should be moved in the wintertime when they're in theory dormant. They were already starting to leaf out. But we will be moving those roses on Monday and I thank the mayor for the approval of Millbrae's first Martin Luther King Community Vol, Community Day of Service. If you would like to join us, it'll be Monday from 10 to 12. Meet at the top of the doorways, basically, of the new community garden where you can see a lot of changes that Parks have put in. They put in additional walkway, they're getting ready to do a pollinator garden. A Boy Scout is going to be putting citrus trees in over the next couple of months. But the goal of Monday's project is to dig up these old roses, transplant them to the new location. If we get a lot of volunteers, there's quite, there's some litter that has built up in the fence around the burnt, the, the old rec center. So we'll walk through and we'll clean that up so that people walking on the street don't see sadly liquor bottles thrown over the fence. And, you know, a few other things to basically try to recover or save anything from the old rec center before construction begins. So I thank the mayor for that. It's Millbrae's very first Martin Luther King Community Day. Hope you'll join us, 10 to 12. Please bring water. Please bring your own gloves. We have gloves, but... So I thank the mayor for that. It's Milbrae's very first Martin Luther King Community Day, hope you'll join us, 10 to 12. Please bring water, please bring your own gloves, we have gloves, but bring your own gloves, and if you happen to have a set of small clippers, this isn't for the roses, but if we find anything else we have to move, we only have a couple of clippers. Parks will be providing shovels and the soil improvements, and it should be a Community Day, hopefully as much fun as when we built the garden. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Aliva?
Sure, so I want to go to you on- One more time, I want to say how important that census is, so please, everybody, take that very, very seriously. Over the holiday season, I want to share something that I was able to do with this Sal League, on the board I sit on, the Sheriff's Activity League, we delivered gifts with the sheriffs to a huge amount of families. I was in Redwood City, and I was able to take my husband, who brought his guitar and sang to at least 15 families that we went to go visit and deliver gifts to, so thank you for that opportunity, and I'm very, very honored, and I hope I represented Milbrae well with that. I also wanted to share that the Lunar New Year Parade is coming up on the 26th in Milbrae, and I'm sure I'll see all of you there, and everybody else will enjoy that as well, and then we'll follow with the New Year's with the Rotary Club on February 7th at, where is it, where's the dinner?
Zen Peninsula.
Zen Peninsula, thank you. And I hope that everybody here will be attending as well. And then lastly, but not leastly, happy birthday, Councilmember Wayne Lee. Thank you.
And, Councilwoman, maybe you can see if Chobe can open for the Beats and Brews this year.
I might have to take a permit out every week in my house for what goes on there.
All right, Councilman Lee?
Yes, thank you for your well wishes. Let's see, I think I've covered everything, that's awesome. But the parade will start, the Lunar New Year Parade will start at, on Sunday 26 at 11:30 at the Living Spaces, and there will be a show, I think, we were closing Broadway and what, Taylor, is it? Just that one block?
That's correct, yep.
There will be a stage and entertainment and food. Again, congratulations to retirement of Chief Kennamire. And, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if we can close in honor of Mayor Glenn Sylvester's mother passed away, the mayor of Daly City, Linda Mangelsel, I just, I sent, Elaine and Alana, I sent you the, I sent you the, her name. Okay, thank you very much, and, and happy, happy new decade, everybody.
Thank you. We are trying to move right along into our, get a good, an early start on our goal-setting for the year, and we have proposed the date of February 4th, I know it's the same evening as Community Enhancement Committee, but we'd like to get going on this sooner rather than later, we have a facilitator who's available on that date, and hopefully we can have the council there, so please get back on the email if, if you are available that day. We're also, in preparation for that goal-setting meeting at our next council meeting, we're planning a 6:00 PM, kind of a recap as to what we've accomplished during the past year, and just to kind of help get everyone into, help everyone think about what we'd like to add to our goals for the coming year, so not so much of an interactive type of meeting, but more of a presentation on, you know, what we've accomplished and where we are on goals that we've set over the last year or two. So hope to see you all there, that'll be at 6:00 PM before our next council meeting on January 28th. And, yeah, we'd like to close, oh, sorry?
I'm sorry.
The Milbrae Lions Crab Feed is the day before the Lunar Festival, which is January 25th, so if you need, if you want tickets, please find any lion, they can tell you how to go about getting tickets.
Yes, we have a busy schedule, and I think maybe that'll be one of the first items of business with the Civic Coordinating Council, to see if some of the events can be spaced out a little bit, but it's nice to have all these events going on at the beginning of the year. So, yes, in honor, in closing of the meeting, in addition to Glenn Sylvester's mother, Linda Mangelsel, we also have lost Jim Fox, the former San Mateo County District Attorney had passed away, I'd like to close in his honor. Also Joseph Quatt, a longtime Milbrae resident, he was a member of CERT and the Milbrae Amateur Radio Club, also a founder of the Neighborhood Watch on Pinone Avenue, and helped with the fire assessment. And also Darlene Reinhardt, who was the former owner of Zach's Bar and Grill, if you remember the old Zach's here in Milbrae. So we give our thoughts and our sympathies to the families of, of those that we've lost. And, oh, sorry, Councilman Lee?
Well, I want to do it on a brighter side, I want to congratulate our city attorneys on her grand, granddaughter, new granddaughter?
Yes.
And we will also close in honor of the granddaughters. Okay, and with that, we will adjourn, and we will be back on January 28th. Thank you.
January 23rd, January 28th.